Good afternoon. This is August 5, 2025, meeting of the Santa Barbara City Council. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Councilmember Harmon not yet present. Councilmember Santa Maria?
Here.
Councilmember Stinn?
Here.
Mayor Potem Friedman?
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez not yet present. Councilmember Jordan?
Here.
And Mayor Rouse?
Here. Thank you. And we have a ceremonial item to read. Would you read that into the record, please?
Yes. Employee recognition service award pins.
All righty. And Ms. McAdoo?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It is my honor and privilege to recognize a number of city employees for their service award, years of service to the Santa Barbara community. First, we have five years. We have Myra Esparza, who is a recreation coordinator in Parks and Recreation. And I don't believe any of them are here today, so I'll just read everyone and then we'll applaud at the end. So, 10 years, we have Manuel Gonzalez, who is a grounds maintenance worker, too, in Parks and Recreation. For 15 years of service, we have Simone Perez, Senior Wastewater Collection System Operator in Public Works, and Gerald Holcomb, grounds maintenance worker, too, in Parks and Recreation. For 20 years of service, we have Tim Burgess, who is a project planner in our Sustainability and Resilience Department, and Jill Murray, our Creek Supervisor in Sustainability and Resilience. And lastly, 25 years of service, Gregory Quarle, our General Services Manager in the Finance Department. Please join me in congratulating all of these employees for their years of service.
Thank you, Ms. McAdoo. And are any changes to the agenda?
We do have two changes to the agenda, consent calendar items. I don't believe they require being pulled from the agenda, but just to, I'm going to read those changes for you, for the council. The first is item number six, which is the Third Amendment to Professional Services Agreement for the Evaluation of the Proposed Development at Paseo Nuevo. We are actually removing the resolution from this item because it does not require new appropriations. We'll be using unsprint appropriations from the Street Master Plan Measure C funding. So really, the recommendation will just be now Recommendation A, which is amending the contract, so removing Recommendation B. And then the other change to the agenda is Agenda Item Number Eight. On Recommendation C, we are going to change the appointment date for vacancies for the various city advisory groups to Tuesday, December 2, instead of November 18. And I believe those are all the changes we have.
All right, very good. And are there any items that needed to be polled by any member of council for further discussion or separate vote? Madam Clerk, are there any submitted public requests to speak on anything on the consent calendar?
We have one hand raised. The persons should be only raising their hand now if they want to speak on the consent calendar?
Specific item?
Specifically, okay. There are no hands raised.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. And with that, I'll entertain a motion with the included changes by the city administrator for the consent calendar.
I'll move consent with the change to six and eight, please.
Move by Jordan.
Second.
Second by Friedman. May we have the vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Yes, this is a motion by Councilmember Jordan, seconded by Mayor Potem Friedman, for the entirety of the consent calendar with the changes as noted for Items Six and Eight. Please go ahead and vote.
Do you want to do something with?
I'm gonna, yes, hold on one second. And I'm actually going to cancel that, and I'll mark him has absent. So hold one second. I will cancel this, and we will change it to note that. And this is just attendance. One second, and I will have you vote in one moment on that consent vote.
Save so much time in the electronic age, don't we?
So much more efficient. Okay, now you can vote on the consent motion.
Now. Very little further ado.
Thank you. It passes six to one. Mr. Gutierrez absent. Thank you very much. Then we have a report from the Ordinance Committee. Madam Chair?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Rouse. Today, we heard an item on proposing amendments to Section of Title 17 on municipal code pertaining to transfer of slip permits in the Santa Barbara harbor with some few additions. We unanimously moved the item on, and it will be seen at council.
All right, thank you very much. And with that, we'll move on to general public comment. We have three minutes at the dais for anything that is not on today's agenda but within the purview of this body. And we'll start out with Michael Holliday.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Michael Holliday. I'm a local architect here in town. I know many of you. Been practicing here in Santa Barbara for 35 years and a member of the AIA Santa Barbara, past president, and involved in a number of local housing projects. And what I'd like to talk to you about today is not one specific project, but a number of projects that are trying to move forward in this community. And one of the misnomers that people have, and I think maybe City Council, city leaders have, is that developers are crushing it and making tons of money on these projects and therefore cramming 10%, 15%, 20% inclusionary affordable housing on them just as sort of a way of extracting their pound of flesh they need to pay to do something inside of Barbara. And I can tell you that that is not the case. We're involved in about a half a dozen projects right now that barely pencil as market rate housing projects. So I know a lot of this has to be worked out, and you guys are reviewing a number of different projects, but I just want to tell you, we're sitting on a number of projects. They just don't pencil financially. And the reason is it's so expensive to build. So as architects, we're sort of on the front line. The clients hire us. We design these beautiful buildings. They get approved. We go through the design review process. We pull building permits. And then the financial guys come in and look at the final numbers, and they just don't pencil. And so we're hoping that Santa Barbara doesn't go down as being the city with the most vision and the least amount of implementation. If you go look at the drawings that are down there in the City Council chambers, we have really 100 years of beautiful drawings, and it's mostly three and four and sometimes five stories of housing above ground floor commercials. So unless we get the density to work on these projects and we let the economics be what they may, that's really the push that we will be coming to you as AIA local architects, suggesting that we don't get involved in forcing inclusionary affordable component on these housing projects because they just don't work. They don't pencil. And so we'll come back with more specific information, but every time people think they're doing the right thing, I think it's well-intended consequences that have an adverse effect. And our suggestion is that you let the market determine what makes the most sense. We need all kinds of housing. I'm a board member on the UCSB Economic Forecast Board, and we recently presented, I don't know, many of you are there at the Granada, on housing. And California has done the second worst in the entire nation on housing. So New York is number one in housing its residents. We just haven't built enough housing for our residents. This isn't about growth. It's just about providing housing. So we just encourage the City Council to think about that when you're making policy decisions. And we need all types of housing in the community. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is, I believe, is MJ?
Yes, that's me, Mr. Rodney. Appreciate it. So there's a couple of topics that I want. One, the housing, is I accidentally moved here because I had never even heard of Santa Barbara, and I came across it when I was on a trip. And since during COVID, my business went belly up, I decided if I was going to start all over, why not go ahead and start where I might want to retire? And one of the things that attracted me to this area was that I heard that there was a really strict code for building here, that the buildings had to be kind of custodorian looking, right? And they could only be so high and stuff like that. Well, since I've moved here, I've noticed that there's a lot of square buildings with very little artistic to them. Sorry, sir, don't mean to disrespect you. So I just want to encourage, one, that if this was for real, that there was a rule that they had it look kind of Hispanic looking, that we keep that going. The other is, since I moved here, I've heard and seen where little houses in some of the communities that had plants and gardens growing in them with fruits that offered the people who lived there, you know, chance to have free, fresh fruits, grapevines and stuff like that, are being bulldozed over for bigger houses. And I lived in Fairfax, and when I moved to Fairfax, it was country, and it was beautiful. And people from Washington DC and all of the areas would come down and visit and check the wineries out and just check the rolling hills. And now Fairfax, I don't want to live there. It's buildings that don't look right, houses, small houses, where now there's big houses where there's no room for gardens for people to, kids to play in. And Santa Barbara is a beautiful city. I've traveled to 55 countries. When I travel, I go to places in the neighborhoods, the old Chinatowns in Hong Kong. In India, I went to Humpy, where there was the ruins in it. And like, in New York, you want to go for the buildings and stuff like that, but they've got arts and stuff and real cool things to see. So I just want the people who are in charge of saying yes to all the buildings to take time and think, what is it that we're going to really want, and what are we going to miss? And what do we want Santa Barbara to be like later on? I know that because I wasn't raised here, and, you know, I didn't grow up here, maybe I shouldn't say much. But you guys did such a great job that it was, it was like, if I was going to go anywhere when I retired, this seemed like a good place. And I'm trying to stay here. But whether I succeed in that, I would really like it to be as beautiful as it was when I came here, I guess. All right. The next one is, as a single mom, I never got to go to the city hall meetings. And in my town, they were later on in the evening. The people who worked for town hall would start their day later, so they would work later, so the people after their jobs could come. I was a nanny, so I got to stay there, you know, seven, eight o'clock, and I didn't get a chance to be a part of it. I've noticed that the city hall.
Thank you.
Yep.
Madam Clerk, are there any speakers online for general public comment?
Yes, we have one hand raised for general public comment. Frederick Jenka, please go ahead.
Hello. Hello, Council and Mayor. I just wanted to, my name is Frederick Jenka. I'm the Board President of Museum of Contemporary Art, Santa Barbara. I just wanted to thank you all for the work that you've been working on with Paseo Propco, and we're excited about these new developments. I'm really grateful.
Well, that's, excuse me, sir, that's an agenda, sir, that's agenda I'm coming up, so you'd have to wait until we get to that item on the agenda.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. Further commenters online?
Mr. Mayor, there is one additional raised hand, David Solis. And again, this is for general public comment, not items on the agenda. David Solis, please go ahead. Go ahead, David Solis.
Go ahead. Commenters online?
Mr. Mayor, there is one additional raised hand, David Solis. And again, this is for general public comment, not items on the agenda.
I apologize.
David Solis, please go ahead.
I wanted to comment on the short-term rental agenda items, so I should wait.
Okay, that'll be item number 10. Does that, 10 or nine? Nine.
That'll be item nine, Mr. Solis. Thank you.
David Solis.
Oh, go ahead. All right.
No further speakers for general public comment, Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good. Well, I was remiss. I didn't have Ms. Gorman read any of our agenda from the consent calendar into the record, so would you please go ahead? We're going to redo that item.
Very good. So, reading into the record, Item Two, Adoption of Ordinance Regarding Lease Agreement Between City of Santa Barbara and Dean Ordinance Adoption. Recommendation the Council Adopt by Reading of Title Only and Ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara Approving and Authorizing the Airport Director to Execute Lease Agreement 202502 with Jennifer Shively, a sole proprietorship operating under the name Dean, located at 6100 Hollister Avenue, Building 1, Unit B, commencing upon the effective date of the enabling ordinance. Item Three, Authorizing Portal to Portal Pay for Sworn and Nonsworn Police and Fire Department Employees Resolution. Recommendation the Council Adopt by Reading of Title Only. A resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara authorizing portal to portal pay for sworn and nonsworn police and fire personnel assigned to mutual aid response in other jurisdictions. Item Four, Appropriation of Design Funds for Highway Safety Improvement Programs, Cycle 12 Projects Resolution. The Council, recommendation the Council adopt by reading of title only. A resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Resolution Number 25066, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2026 to appropriate funds for the Highway Safety Improvement Programs, Cycle 12 Projects. Item Five, Authorized Purchase of Real Property Located at 1633 La Corinia Drive, Santa Barbara, and appropriate water funds for the purchase of real property located at 1633 La Corinia Drive. Resolution. Recommendation the Council, A, adopt by reading of title only. A resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara authorizing acquisition of real property located at 1633 La Corinia Drive, Santa Barbara, APN 035033007, authorizing the Public Works Director to execute an agreement for the purchase and sale, including escrow instructions and all related documents subject to approval as deformed by the city attorney, and consenting to the recordation of the grant deed pursuant to Government Code Section 27281. And B, adopt by reading of title only. A resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Resolution Number 25066, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2026 to appropriate water funds for the purchase of real property located at 1633 La Corinia Drive. Item Six, Third Amendment to Professional Services Agreement for the Evaluation of Proposed Development at Paseo Nuevo. Oh, and actually, I don't believe I need to read that because it does not have a resolution as amended. And that's all the items.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gorman. Mr. Jordan, Mr. Friedman, can I get you to redo your motions, please? Move the consent calendar in again.
You have to look at the numbers. Six and eight as amended, and the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
First by Jordan, second by Freeman. Please have the vote, please.
Thank you. Go ahead and vote, please.
Passes six, one, with Mr. Gutierrez absent. My apologies. We'll move on to item nine. Read that into the record, please, Madam Clerk.
Very good. Item nine, Short-Term Vacation Rental Enforcement Program Update and Short-Term Rental Program Ordinance Update.
All right. Mr. Doymus, are you doing the presentation? Oh, very good.
Good afternoon, Mayor Rouse. Good afternoon, Councilmembers. William Elva, I'm the City Attorney Investigator, and I'm here to provide you with an update of the Short-Term Rental Enforcement Program. The Short-Term Rental Enforcement Program became a permanent program in July of 2024 with the approval of our City Council. The goal of the program is still the same, of enforcing regulations pertaining to illegal, unpermitted short-term rentals within the City of Santa Barbara. During fiscal year 2025, the program investigated 230 properties. Out of those properties, we were able to gain voluntary compliance on 182 properties. The remainder of properties are still being investigated and novated. Since the inception of the program in 2023, the program identified approximately 1,298 illegal short-term rentals within the City of Santa Barbara. Since then, we have investigated 324 properties, and we still have approximately 974 properties to investigate. I want to emphasize it's important and crucial to continue enforcement of short-term rentals to decrease the potential of it expanding again as it did before. Some of the challenges we faced this past fiscal year is that some of the rental platforms changed the algorithm of their rentals listings so they won't be identified by us. And then they were turning off their rental listings during work hours, hoping that we wouldn't find the rental listings. Fortunately, we worked with our, with our service provider to identify these changes, and we were able to find those listings, and it didn't affect our enforcement during that period. But it's one of those where it was important to note that they aren't making changes, and we are adapting to those changes as well. Another problem we face is that there seems to be a relation between people who visit Santa Barbara and the property owners for short-term rentals, and they're circumventing the rental platforms. Fortunately, when there's a dispute among the people who are visiting and the property owners, they have no other recourse but to contact the city, and they have been calling us and reporting those illegal short-term rentals directly to us. So that's the plus side on that. So far this fiscal year, the program was able to collect approximately $1.8 million in back taxes, penalties, interest, and fees. The cost of the program thus far for this fiscal year was about $230,000. So far, since inception of the program, we have collected approximately $2.6 million in back taxes, penalties, fees, and interest. The slide you see in front of you shows you how the money is being distributed. 74% goes to the general fund. 11% is for T-Bid, and 15% of that goes to creeks. As we move forward with the program, we're going to continue to investigate the remainder cases. We're going to adapt our investigation techniques to meet, you know, trends that we find as far as, you know, property owners trying to obscure their rental listings or whatever taxes they apply to, you know, evade us from CMM. We are actually, at this point, conducting an audit on the cases that we've closed already to ensure that they are, continue to comply with our regulations. We started doing audits about a month ago, and we found about three properties who, after we contacted them in form of the regulations, they continue to rent as short-term rentals, and we address those issues at this point. So we're going to continue to monitor and audit our cases to ensure compliance. For those at home and here in the public, if you feel or you think that a property is being rented as an illegal short-term rental, we have a hotline. The number's up there for you to call. And we also have a online form on our webpage that you can file a complaint of a property you believe to be renting as a short-term rental. And that's my part of the presentation.
All right. Do we have any questions about the enforcement portion of the presentation? I actually had one, and that relates to a neighbor of mine who got notice from the city that he owed, and turns out that it wasn't him that put it online. I don't know what it would take to investigate something like that, but I can imagine. Is that very common that the fraudulent, fraudulent people out there are saying, send in your deposit, I've got your rental for you, and then they walk up, and there's no such thing?
Mayor Rouse, thank you for that question. We have not encountered that. In the particular case you were mentioning, the property picture was the one from that address, but the rental listing was for a separate address. So they were using a picture of a different house with, you know, so they were placing somebody else's picture on their rental listing, hoping that we wouldn't find them. We had to do some extra digging and figure out what the address was, but eventually we were able to determine the proper address for that. We sent an email to Airbnb notifying them of the error, and we haven't heard back from them in regards to correcting that listing.
But in that case, the occupant received letters from the city saying they were violating the rules by doing STR, which he didn't have an STR. So what are their, what do they, what do they do in that case if somebody is victimized in that way?
So the letters that we sent are the inquiry. So we tried to contact the property owners directly by phone. If we can't reach them by phone, we send a letter stating that we have a potential violation of the short-term rental regulations, and we want to talk to them regarding that potential violation. We don't make an accusatory determination until we have all the evidence to support a violation of the municipal code. So they wouldn't receive a letter saying that you are committing a violation. What we send is inquiries saying, we're investigating a complaint. You know, it may be valid, it may not be valid, but we need your input to see if it is, if it's not. So that's the type of letter that gets sent out, just in case we can verify if it is a short-term rental or not. When we're sure about it, then we can take steps of contacting our prosecutor, and he evaluates the case to determine if we have enough to continue on. But the letter that we sent onset is a inquiry of, we're trying to determine if there's a violation, and we want to give the property owners an opportunity to talk to us in regards to the possible violation, either it is or not, to confirm with it. Normally, we do get a proper response, and they cooperate with us. Sometimes, we don't.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Friedman?
Thank you. And thank you for the, for these numbers. I think in most of what I've seen in my years on the council, this is one of the most cost-effective, cost-benefit programs that I've ever come across, especially considering we started out with a budget of a million, dropped it down to about 20%, and exceeded our, only our, the rest of our budget could be that way. I just had a question in regards to if the enforcement penalties are enough to dissuade people from doing, continuing to do this illegally, or if it's a cost of doing business. What I mean by that is, say that someone can rent out their home on the market illegally for, say, $5,000 for a weekend, and what is the penalty? And would they just factor that in if they get caught? It's the cost of doing business.
Mr. Friedman, Councilmember Friedman, I can just speak to that really quickly. So the penalties are imposed for the late payment of the TOT and T-Bid, not for the action of maintaining an illegal short-term rental. The penalty for an illegal short-term rental would be criminal prosecution.
It's crazy. I just wanted to clarify. So it's criminal prosecution, that's the deterrent, so it's not monetary?
Correct.
Yeah, there's monetary aspect of it. There's penalties and interest required by statute by the municipal code.
Oh, sorry. Got it. Thank you.
Okay, sure. Thank you, Mr. Way. Mr. Jordan?
Same question, kind of. Sarah, is there something that prevents us from adding some type of civil, without going to court, some type of civil penalty or a dollar penalty onto those who are caught in a situation where they are, in one of our structures, are illegally running a short-term vacation rental?
Councilmember Jordan, through the mayor. So we previously, in the early on iterations of the Short-Term Rental Enforcement Program through our office before it became this program, we did have a penalty, an administrative penalty basis. We didn't prosecute criminally, and we found that to be very ineffective.
Because it was too low, too cumbersome?
Right, because it's too cumbersome, the process that you have to go through for. The process that you have to go through for administrative penalties is very cumbersome.
To meet the burden of proof?
Correct. Yeah. And perhaps Mr. Doymus wants to chime in on?
Sure, then I'll let Mr. Way chime in, too. Yeah, when I dealt with that progress, the administrative, the process to just get an administrative hearing officer, the hours it would take to prepare for such a case was cumbersome. Now, state law changed a couple of years ago that allows us to increase the administrative fines for vacation rentals. We have not done that. We still go by the standard of what we have in the municipal code, which is a much lower amount than it would be. And so when we are talking about modifying or changing the ordinance in terms of vacation rentals, we could adopt the new limit. Because we do, to answer your question, Councilmember Jordan, we do have a limit prescribed by the state for how much we can charge administratively for fines. So we could go that. Not that it's the best method. I think the method that Mr. Way and Mr. Elva have done through this is the best, but there is a mechanism where we might as well go if we, when we adopt the ordinance, to match that increase a lot under state law.
So there's two civil ways of going about it, and one criminal way. The two civil way of going about it is one administrative, and another one is by civil lawsuit. And those are all options available to us. Right now, the administrative fine is low, and you're right. If we went administratively, the first offense is $100, second offense is 200, and third offense is 250. We're able to see how much they make. That's not going to-
Per time we catch you, or per days we can show?
That we can prove. Per time we can prove. And there's no right to subpoena the records administratively. There's no mechanism in place. We can also go civilly. I have filed one civil lawsuit. It resolved. The reason I did that was there was a criminal prosecution. She was ordered to pay restitution. She didn't, and the house was on for sale. So there was a fear that the taxpayers' money, they would never get their money if she sold the house, and under criminal, if they're indigent, there's nothing, if the money's gone, the money's gone. So we did pursue a civil lawsuit, and it resolved with us getting the taxpayers' money as part of a settlement during escrow. So, yeah, civil is an option.
Okay. Thank you. On that slide that showed the revenue and the expenses, the inland zone that has $1.3 million in revenue, is it safe to say that everybody that was caught up in that net has either been shut down or abated to a legal permitting process if that was a zone they were in?
So right now, we have approximately two, I mean, five properties are permitted in the inland area. So the rest of these properties that we contacted were in the area, in a zone, their short-term rentals are not permitted. So we were able to explain them the law, and they gained compliance by having them pay back the back taxes, but interest and penalties and fees, and they were asked to shut down their short-term rental listing for that property.
But if they were in a zone that allowed it, they had the choice of going through the torturous task of trying to get permitted, too, right?
Correct. But in the meantime, until they got the permit, they needed to shut down and comply with the law.
So it was abated that way?
Yes.
In the inland area, in the coastal zone, there's the cracky decision.
I don't even think we want to talk about that right now. Other than I have a question, do you happen to know the number off the top of your head? I know it's like 10 or less in the coastal zone that actually went through the permitting process.
Very, yes, small. I don't know the exact-
Like less, 10 or less, right?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. I think that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Santa Maria.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. My question is about how we keep track of the short-term rentals that we are identifying and whether we're bringing them into compliance or not. Do we have a database in our city, or what does the tracking of this look like?
So the city contracted with a company called Decur Technologies, and they have a platform called Rentalscape. Rentalscape identifies and verifies short-term rental listings within our city. We are provided with a list of those properties that we have to, again, verify to ensure that they are actually illegal short-term rentals. So we do have a list of potential short-term rental violations, or properties that are in violation, but we still have to verify that the property is in violation to ensure that.
Okay. And are the operators or the owners of the short-term rentals, are they required to obtain a business permit within our city to operate, or not?
They have to remit business taxes.
Okay.
But if you're going to do business like a short-term rental, you have to remit business taxes and get a business tax certificate.
Okay.
That's one of the potential charges if they don't comply.
So we are seeing that these folks are not, they don't have that documentation, correct? Is that what we're saying, from the unlawful or illegal short-term rentals?
If it's in the area where short-term rentals prohibited, and in the area where short-term rentals prohibited, they shouldn't be able to get a business tax certificate. They should be alerted at that by the finance department, that that's not a lawful use for the property.
Right. So are we seeing our short-term rentals out there without that certificate?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're seeing, right?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Okay. But there is no specific permit we're requiring them, like, there's no, like, you know, when you operate a business, you'll get a business permit with the city. We're not requiring them to do that, correct?
Yeah, no, that's what it is.
Oh, that is what it is? Okay.
The slang for that is a business license.
Got it. And where do we keep track of those business?
The finance department.
The finance department would keep track of, okay. And are we tracking those business licenses for short-term and long-term rentals, just short-term? Only short-term?
Yes.
Okay.
Only certain long-term rentals require a business tax certificate. It has to be a larger type of rental business. So not, for example, if it was a person just renting their single-family home, one home is not going to require a business tax certificate.
I see. Okay. How has, I think you mentioned it was called Rentalscape, the platform? How has that been working for you all? Do you feel like that has been an effective platform to use? Are you seeking direction from council on other ways to enforce or track? Or I'm just curious about the enforcement mechanism and how that's working for you all.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Santa Maria. So when we initiated the program, we met with several vendors in regards to the programs that we're providing. They all pretty much gave us the same aspect of what they can provide us at a different cost. Rentalscape was the one that came at a very reasonable price and provided us with the information we needed to begin our investigations. It is a tool that we use, is not the ultimate tool we use. We are able to track those short-term rentals by other means, but it is a tool that facilitates the ability to see how many listings are out there and provides us with information to, like, a starting point.
Sure. Okay.
We always care about council input, so whatever. We care a lot, so whatever you tell us, we definitely keep that in mind.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Two more quick questions. What is the type of information that you get from this platform that helps you start that investigation?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Santa Maria. Normally, what we get would be the address, property owner information, and the booking information, activity, reviews, and then the actual URL for the rental listing itself, so we can search it separately. We have to verify every listing to ensure they're not in compliance.
Okay, I see. So they're utilizing the public platforms, right, like Airbnb and VRBO to find those? Or how do they find them?
Correct. They have an algorithm that they use that searches words and the way the listings are created to find the ones that are on our city. And sometimes we get some that are, depends how they're listed. If it says Santa Barbara in the listing, we'll get them, and then we have to ensure they are within our city limits. It could be Carpinteria or Galita. So there's a process on that. And then they utilize Google Maps and other types of public ways of verifying the location of the house by pictures. Google Maps is pretty great, and Google Earth to verify trees and other areas surrounding the pictures. Same thing we do when we didn't have Rentalscape before.
Right. So other than Rentalscape and Google Maps, anything else that you use right now to sort of help you in your investigation and keep track of what's going on with these rentals?
Yes, the county also provides us access to the database, the documents that are recorded, so we can see what was recorded for that document, who the owner of the properties are, what, you know, what encumbrance is on the property. So after the pilot program started, the county was great in providing us access to that. And every investigator, and I have access to that information.
I see. As far as habitability goes for those units, how, what has that been like in terms of enforcing, making sure that these buildings or these units are up to code? And I mean, you would know more than I do on what the status of these units are, but I'm assuming they're not all up to code. So what does that look like when you run into short-term rental? It's maybe not where it should be?
We involve the building and safety staff when we find out that there's unpermitted construction. We, there has, I can remember one case where there's, you know, substandard code issues. What we encounter more of are unpermitted constructions.
Yes.
So we see that much more. And so when that occurs, we pull in code compliance, and so we work jointly together with them in gaining compliance. And I've had cases where the charges are not just short-term rental charges, but also for the building code violations as well.
Right. So code compliance, I'm assuming, would have their own databases, they're keeping track of everything they're seeing.
They do.
Okay. Are all of these then, because I'm seeing you all in the city attorney's office have a sort of database that you're running, right, with all of the short-term rentals you're identifying, but finance also seems to have some information, and then code enforcement? And all of that is separate, correct?
It's separate, yes.
Okay. Great. That is all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. And thank you, this is extremely successful pilot, as Councilmember Freeman mentioned, too. And already, like, in neighborhoods, in my neighborhood, there were five to seven that were illegally operating, and now there are families living there instead. And so it's, I don't know if anecdotally, or there are numbers for how many have been reverted to actual long-term tenants or not, but it already seems like such a success. I had a question about, two quick questions. One, about the expenses collected, the fees, penalties, back taxes. Do we expect that amount to level off or decrease once things get caught up? Or is that sort of what will keep coming in, because you'll always have people who aren't paying the back tax? Or what do you anticipate for that?
Mayor Rouse, Councilmembers, thank you for that question. We forecast that the amount of money might be increasing slightly, but at some point, it will kind of decrease and stabilize at some point.
Okay. Thank you.
If we're successful, the hope is at some point it'll be nothing. People will comply, and it will eventually-
And that might take a couple of years, or?
We forecast, from the inception of the pilot program, we forecast five years for the program. So we're in the second year of it, so we're hoping by next year or the following, we'll have a good grasp of where we're at.
Okay. It's very successful. This is really, thank you.
Thank you.
So then the second question I have, and maybe someone can remind me how we decided for the revenue allocation. So I just want to make sure, so there's 74%, just slide eight, 74% goes to general fund, and then 15% goes to the Creeks Measure B Fund? Is that correct?
It's based on, so how it's divided is based on what the municipal code mandates. So how it's, that's how we collect it, and that's how we distribute it. So, yeah, it's just based on what the code tells us. We don't really have discretion on that aspect of it. And there's a very small percentage of that that's not on there is the abatement costs. We seek abatement costs when cases are filed, so they have to pay for that as well. But that's much smaller than anything that's up there.
Okay, thank you. So this is not in our discretion? We can't say, let's put it somewhere else?
No.
Okay. That answers that question. And then, so when it goes to the T-Bid assessment, that just goes into that same assessment fund as all the other funds that go in?
Yes. And Brenda, I believe she's here, she's the person that does the finance for us, she's a whiz, and she knows how to break it down and what's owed.
Okay. No, thank you so much. Thank you, Brenda. Okay. Thank you.
All right, very good. Before we move into this next section, I want to announce that anybody who wants to submit a speaker slip for item nine should do here, should do so as of 10 of three. Same thing online for raising a hand if you wish to speak to this item. We have a number of speaker slips, and want to make sure we have time for everyone. With that, we'll go back to staff. Oops, sorry.
It's okay.
Ms. Bradley?
Good afternoon, Mayor Rouse and members of city council. My name is Laura Bradley. I recently joined the community development staff in April of this year, and they gave me short-term rental permitting to run with. So here we are. We're going to start with a recommendation that we receive summary background, provide that to you, actually, and then to update the STR program and consider program options, and that we're hoping you can direct staff to draft an STR ordinance for review. We have five presentation topics, or this is how it's organized. One is to provide a background of short-term rental. We know that you have all been through it for many years, but it helps to refresh ourselves. Existing regulations, wanted to cover where these are currently allowed. Also, prior council direction, most recently in June of 2024, and give to you some options for a recommended program, and then confirm your direction for that program. We wanted to start with a short-term terminology, a crib sheet, if you will. So short-term rental essentially is a dwelling unit that is rented for less than 30 days, as opposed to one that's 31 days or longer, which is just considered a regular rental. Home share is a version of that. It's something where the dwelling is occupied by the primary resident of the property, and that means it won't disturb housing provision for a resident, and it is rented for whole or in part for 30 consecutive days or less. This is the classic example that we've heard from council of the schoolteacher who might want to rent out a room or two over the course of years. The hosted home share is a subversion of that, which is where the primary resident is present all the time during the rental period. And then the non-hosted home share is one where that resident is not present, and there are concerns from staff about that last model. So the recent history, when I got this job, I started looking at all of the past hearings, going back to about 2013, and I watched a lot of hearings. I watched several of them twice. Listen carefully, and this is a quick history of that. So from 2015 to 2018, the council initiated some enforcement and considered a work program for STRs as they were becoming more popular. There was also an effort by staff to go to the planning commission, and also to reach out to the California Coastal Commission as part of a bigger program that it was doing with the Coastal Commission. In 2018, there was something of a watershed decision, a writ of mandate, the cracky writ of mandate. You've all heard very much things about it, but essentially, it limited the city's enforcement against STRs in the coastal zone, which is why you saw some of those statistics from the city attorney's office before. Go ahead. In 2019 to 2022, the Coastal Commission provided feedback, and that caused the city to develop a definition of the STR as a hotel that allowed us to help enforce things in the coastal zone. It also, the council also adopted an interim urgency ordinance for that definition, and then also considered a framework, again, with a home share option at that point. Again, it's a three-year period boiled down into three bullets. From '23 to '25, our most recent period, the council approved a pilot program that you heard about today from the city attorney's office, very successful, and made that permanent in April 2024. It also approved, this is significant to me as a planner with almost 40 years of experience, you adopted your housing element that has mandates in it that actually calls for the city to preserve long-term housing, and obviously, taking short-term rentals back into long-term housing is one of those goals. Short-term rental program direction was received from council on a few meetings, including the most recent one on June 24 of '25. We also, Rosie Dyson, my supervisor to my left, is, and I met with the Coastal Commission staff in May of this year to go over some of the direction that council provided last year and tell them that we're reinvigorating the effort to get an STR program on the books. As you know, and as the public has opined, there are impacts associated with STRs. We just listed a couple of them, but it's a loss of long-term housing. I'm going to say that over and over again. The loss of a community or a sense of neighborhood. There's neighborhood incompatibility and nuisance issues because you have residents that are transitory. And there's a concern about real estate speculation, where some of our housing stock is being purchased simply for commercial purposes and no housing purposes. So that leads us to the question of why create an STR ordinance? Your council has asked for this for many years. We've gone around the block. there's a concern about real estate speculation, where some of our housing stock is being purchased simply for commercial purposes and no housing purposes. So, that leads us to the question of why create an STR ordinance. Your council has asked for this for many years. We've gone around the block. There have been different ideas about it, but clearly, the housing element mandate is now before you. You really don't have a choice to do some of the things in that housing element. And this is one that will hopefully maintain long-term housing. I will also assist the city in facilitating enforcement, as you've heard this incredible report from the city attorney's office. We want to continue that with clearer rules and more specific guidelines. It will also improve the ability to track and collect transit occupancy tax. And also, we hope to create some equity with the legal hotels that go through a much more rigorous permitting process than a conversion of a house. So, the current guidance, if someone comes to our counter and asks about, asks about doing a short-term rental, right now, short-term rentals are defined as a hotel, which means you don't have a hotel in a single or dual-unit zone. You can have them in a commercial corridor, but you have to do a conversion of use. That requires a variety of things, whether it's a parking layout or an access point to the house. There aren't necessarily building code things that come into it, but it's still a consuming process, and it's, it's difficult to do. So, it's not easy to get a short-term rental as a hotel, even when you're zoned for the, for it in, in the downtown core. But it is allowed only in zones where hotels are already allowed. So, we have an exhibit that might highlight that for you coming up. In this exhibit, you've seen this in different iterations with multiple colors in different zone districts, but here, I'm going to call it the magenta color, the wine color, the magenta, the red color. That's where they're allowed by right. It just means you have to go through a building code and conversion process to get a short-term rental as a hotel, because we would define you as a hotel. In the yellow area, and again, just look at that area, that's your downtown core, that's where you have hotels, that's where you have visitors, that's where you have commercial things going all the way up to outer state. In the yellow area, they are allowed with a conditional use permit, and that actually includes some areas that are a higher-density residential, or they're also allowed in historic structures in certain areas of that yellow zone. So, it's not like we don't have an area where they can go. We just want them in the downtown core and not in the single-family zone districts. The council provided some direction on June 18th last year, and that was in the inland area. Your consensus was very clear to prohibit STRs in all inland residential, single and two-unit zones. That was a very clear consensus. There was also a consensus to look into a home share model for owner-occupied primary residences. Owner-occupied primary residences. We're going to ask you to be clear about that again today, because the non-owner-occupied, non-hosted presents some enforcement issues. And in the, the home share model could allow for an unlimited number of days per year when the owner's onsite. That was a feeling of consensus also from your council. In the coastal zone, the opinion was to allow STRs in a specified permit area. And last year, you were very specific about where that permit area is. It was an exhibit that is in a few slides, and we'll return to that. But the idea was that that would be the focus where we would do STRs. We're not outlawing them. We just want to put them in a certain area. And then, also, home shares would also be allowed in the coastal zone. So, we have an STR program outline. Here we go. The program goals, again, preserve long-term housing. Try to include performance measures that would enhance neighborhood compatibility. Be considerate of maintaining and reducing nuisances in those neighborhoods. Include effective enforcement and compliance. And I should just, as a side note, say that the project team developing this ordinance includes the city attorney's office. It's been a very strong hand-in-glove relationship, because whatever we say as planners, the attorneys are going to tell us whether it's enforceable and vice versa. And also, just to provide for a straightforward and predictable process. This is something that we've heard from a lot of members of the public. It's just so confusing. We don't have a permit path now for short-term rentals. So, that's one of these program goals. So, right now, the existing commercial areas that we had in that prior exhibit is where they're allowed currently. They're not allowed technically in single-unit or two-unit zones. And they're also not allowed in any accessory dwelling unit or any affordable housing unit. And that's something the council should be clear about. So, all these homes that you're seeing are popping up with ADUs, because that's a housing provision, and the state wants us to do it, and the city has the code and encourages it. You're not allowed to use those as short-term rentals. So, that's important to consider. Nor are you allowed to use them in affordable houses. So, we already have a couple of good policies in place for those. The area that council articulated last year was this crosshatch area in the coastal zone. It was, what we heard on tape, and I watched it a couple of times, was from Castillo to Los Potosai. And staff went ahead and picked up the other blue-hatched areas, because those are already visitors-serving, they already allow visitors-serving uses in our local coastal program, and we don't want to have to change that. Can't really go back to the Coastal Commission and say, we're going to reduce our visitors-serving areas even further. So, this area in the coastal zone would be, we have to give it some great name, but our STR permit area. I was calling it Polygon for a long time, and people just looked at me and scratched their head. This is the permit area, where short-term rentals would have a permit path of their very own, and we would hope to make it a little bit easier than what it is now if you're coming in and asking for a hotel conversion. The home share eligibility, where would that be allowed? Everywhere. Everywhere. I don't have to read the slide. It would be in the inland area, in the coastal zone, in that permit area, in single-unit, two-unit zones, and everything else where housing is allowed. We have a couple industrial zones where it's not allowed. The new short-term rental and home share operational standards, these are all details that are going to be important, and we will develop them in consultation with our team and a pretty aggressive outreach program to all interested parties regarding this. But some of the things we've seen in other ordinances are occupancy limits, the frequency with which a home is rented out, or bedrooms in a home share, parking onsite, offsite, you know, something to be decided, special events, noise, quiet hours, a code of conduct, and a nuisance plan with a 24/7 response. And we don't have to reinvent the wheel. There are lots of good examples of other ordinances out there, so we will pick from a lot of those. Staff is recommending that we include the following enforcement elements, which is, include the permit number in the online listings, because that tells us, that tells the member of the public that's trying to rent it, that it actually has a permit with the city of Santa Barbara, to get to some of Councilman Santa Maria's questions. That platform data sharing and delisting would be something that we build into this with the help of city attorney's office. It would include contract web monitoring services to find out what's out there that's not permitted. It would include an owner affidavit for anyone who gets these conversion permits. We would want to build in high fines for noncompliance, as you just talked about with the city attorney's office. We want to try to make this punitive, not just ignorable. And also, a process to collect TOT payment verification as part of the licensing of the short-term rental, and something to allow for inspections in case there are complaints. So, with that, we put in four questions to council at the end of your staff report on page 11. But we're asking essentially for full-unit STRs. Do you want us to continue to treat them as hotels in terms of the permitting, or do you want us to create an easier permit path? And, in other words, an easier permit path would be that we don't define them as a commercial use. We maintain that they're just a house, and then they don't have to do that conversion of occupancy. And then, in the inland area, do you want to remove both hotel use and short-term rentals from the multi-residential unit with hotel zone district? That is actually something that was a holdover from a prior zoning designation, and in some of these high-density residential areas, you can also have a hotel. It was seen as a logical mixed-use thing years ago, but now we want to try to protect the housing. This exhibit actually shows that area where we would remove hotel uses from the RM zone, the magenta and the commercial zone. So, you can see a lot of that is on the west side between the freeway and, looks like Chapala, and a few areas down by City College. That would maintain the yellow area for a CUP, but then it would reduce the, you know, by right, short-term rental allowance. And for the home share model, we wanted to get your direction about, do you want to have home shares in all zones that allow either a residential or a hotel use, including single-unit and two-unit zones, which is, you know, what we're recommending. Also, do you want to have home shares only, or would you, do you want to consider a non-hosted home share? Your staff report mentions a couple of things, but the team that includes the city attorney and its enforcement arm have a lot of concerns about the non-hosted home share, because there's not an accountability of the owner renting out the room, and it could, with very little effort, walk into like a short-term rental before we even knew it. So, we're not recommending that non-hosted model, but the hosted, we understand, is a way to do this. So, our next steps would be that we have a public outreach plan to go to a lot of interested parties. I've already spoken to Visit Santa Barbara and the Association of Realtors and the League of Women Voters, but we will continue focused stakeholder outreach. We would draft an ordinance for review. The next step would be the planning commission. This fall, we're expecting to have two hearings with the planning commission to consider that. After that, we would finesse it again, and then go to the ordinance committee in the winter of 2026, and then back to your council in winter or spring of '26. This always seems like a long time when you have a long-term ordinance like this, but it frankly just takes a lot of time to get the ordinance written, to actually take it out and shop it around the public, and to revise it and bring it back. We also will continue to work with the Coastal Commission staff throughout this process, expecting to go to them after the completion of the city's process, and that would be in spring of 2027, that that would be completed, because they normally take six to 12 months. So, staff's recommendation is that you provide direction on a future short-term rental program, that you direct staff to draft that program for, and an ordinance for review by the planning commission, the ordinance committee, the finance committee, and city council. That concludes our presentation. Available for questions.
Very good. Thank you very much. So, it's been suggested to me that we could perhaps, like we do with other things that don't require an action other than direction and motion, to go ahead and do public comment first, and then we can do our comments and questions at the same time afterwards. All right?
Okay.
And with everybody's indulgence, we'll go ahead and do that. And we'll start out with Steve Scales.
So, three minutes?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. Well, I wanted to thank you for all your work. This is wonderful. I live on the mesa, and I lived in Hawaii for two years next to a short-term rental. That rental was owned by an LLC on Newport Beach, managed by a local property manager. And as you might imagine, it was impossible to get any accountability. The, one of the underlying, you know, issues is that there's an outsourcing or an onus put on the neighbor to be the de facto first responder. So, 3:00 in the morning, I'm the one who has to then get out of bed, call somebody, and then wait for something to happen at 4:00 in the morning, because I usually get an hour. The other thing I would point out is that people vacation totally different than the way they live. I don't think anybody in this room drinks every night, plays their music, whatever it is, and then goes home and does the exact, exact same thing, right? Like, that people just live differently, right? The other thing I would point out is that, you know, the mesa is a very tight community, right? That we look after our neighbors. People get cancer. People die. Animals die. I don't want to be next to somebody who's there celebrating for four days on a weekend while my, while my wife has breast cancer. And there's nothing like a community to support you. We had somebody die on my street from breast cancer. The community supported that person. It's not a hotel environment. It's a, it's a jewel of a, something that should be protected. Santa Monica has the hosted model. They've had it for years. It's in the Coastal Commission, so there's total precedent for it. And I have very good friends that own a lot of properties that short-term rental, and for whatever reason, they just don't get it. They think it's a disposable asset. They think they're entitled to it. And, you know, I try to say to them, look, you can't run auto parts, you know, auto, auto mechanic, you know what I mean, in the garage. Can't run a Bordello. You can't run a DJ, you know? You can't do certain things in a residential neighborhood that erodes the quiet enjoyment that I'm trying to enjoy as a homeowner. You know, de facto, I think there's an argument to be made that short-term rentals change single-family residential zoning to multifamily, because you have multiple people rolling through it. And, you know, I got 15 minutes, 15 seconds. The host is critical, because they have to live through the pain and the constant transitory aspect, similar to the guy that lives next door to it. If they're onsite and they want to live through 3:00 a.m. or even 10:00 a.m., that's their problem. Quiet hours should be 8, 8:00.
Thank you. Georgia Strickland.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. I'd like to thank you for addressing the topic of short-term vacation rentals, STVRs in Santa Barbara, specifically those on the mesa, which I have been directly affected by. For context, I've lived on the mesa for 44 years and have owned my home for 34. Up to this point, our neighbor has been close-knit with quiet, long-term homeowners and renters. Our neighbors know each other by name and often help each other out when there is a sickness, need rides to the airport or train station. We bring each other's trash cans in and watch out for each other when something is amiss. Yes, there are occasional parties, but minimal conflicts arise because of our open communication and shared respect for each other. Two of my bedrooms are situated on the north side of my property, where the current owner rents his house out as a STVR. I would guess the distance from his house to my two bedrooms is less than 20 feet. The current owner purchased the property just over two years ago with the sole intention of using it as a STVR. It was never going to be a home or a long-term rental for someone living and working in our community. So much of my neighborhood aesthetic has changed since STVRs have been operating in our community, the community that we pay property taxes on. These property purchases are done solely as a money-making venture with no regard to the neighbors. Just within one block of my home, there are four STVRs. The owners of these rentals may or may not be familiar or extremely sensitive us as homeowners, and the often constant disruption of peace and quiet these rentals perpetuate. Specifically, the owner of my neighboring STVR takes days to respond to emails and will not pick up his phone when I've called to complain about noise on his property, even at 3:30 a.m. I have many times reached out to the Santa Barbara Police Department, who are unable to promptly respond to my noise complaints. The advertisement for his particular Airbnb and VRBO specifically states that events are allowed. Just a few weekends ago, there was a wedding reception with a live rock and roll band. It is my hope that my personal experience with these STVRs has provided insight into how our communities are being negatively impacted. The feel of the neighborhood has changed, and it's a sad thing for Santa Barbara homeowners. Again, thank you for addressing the current STVR situation in Santa Barbara. I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you. Lori Kelly.
Hello, councilmembers and mayor. You know, my concern is about the long, the amount of the long-term housing that's being lost to our community because of the short-term rentals. And that's, that is really my main concern, because out of the 12 houses on our street, three of them are now short-term rentals, and there are two additional ones around the corner. And I'm sure most of you are aware that there are new ones are popping up all over the beach area. You know, it's constant. And many of them, as a previous speaker noted, are being bought by LLCs, companies. And that really adds to the competition that our local buyers have to face, you know, to compete against these businesses that own several and, you know, are, have a lot more assets than some of our home buyers. And the trend is also very detrimental to someone like myself and my husband, because we're, we have a home that we are renting out for long-term use, and we find that many of the people that come to rent, you know, look at the house to rent it, they don't want to live next to a hotel. So, when we disclose to them, hey, there's a, you know, we have to tell you, there's a short-term rental next door, you know, they're aware of the disruption and the cleaning crews in and out, and the constant parties, and, you know, all the things that were mentioned earlier. And so, you know, that affects people like me who are trying to do a good thing, and instead of going that route, we're trying to keep it long-term. There are many beach communities in California which allow long-term rentals, you know, they, which allow only long-term rental use. And a few of them are like Carmel, Coronado, Pismo. Pismo Beach, Costa Mesa, Laguna Beach, and Santa Monica. They do not, you know, they do not have the short-term rental system. And I'm just wondering, how do they get around this, you know, and how do they enforce and get around the coastal commission, but yet we can't do that? So it's just perplexing to me, and you might have an answer for that. But I just, you know, hope that you'll really take this to heart and try to keep the Mesa from becoming an entirely commercial zone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Paul Stern.
I want to commend the staff. I think what I saw was a vast improvement over what we heard in the last hearing, because this is a recommendation that is kind of in tune with the market, meaning instead of fighting the market, this recommendation acknowledges that having a primary resident owner there in a home share is going to solve a lot of these problems that we've heard from the people just in the last couple of minutes. And it will also make it so that absentee, short-term rentals from absentee LLCs are not allowed, and therefore enforcement will be easier. Plus, if people have to get a business license, it's going to be way easier to actually collect the taxes than now. But the one flaw in the plan, in my view, is the exclusion of ADUs. I know a lot of people think that ADUs provide additional long-term housing, but in my particular case, when I bought my house here eight years ago, there was an illegal ADU on the property. I spent $200,000 of my own money and $50,000 in permitting to convert that ADU to something that was legal. I lived in it during COVID and rented out the main house so that I could afford the property. But the idea that I, as a home share person, right, should not be allowed to rent out the ADU that was, first of all, you know, illegal when I bought it, I permitted it. It was even owned by a sergeant on the Santa Barbara Police Force who had that illegal unit. I know throughout my neighborhood, a lot of people have made EDUs that have legalized things that were there already, and they're illegal. And I think that you should really look at the idea of enforcing the distinction between a single-family home with a door between this room and the rest of the house, and ADU, which doesn't have a door between this room and then it. It's going to be just so hard, and you're basically going to be creating a legal regiment where people are going to circumvent the law, and you're going to cause people, give people, because the market incentive of these things is so intense, right? I've run an Airbnb until I was shut down because I was an ADU, and I can tell you, I can get 4X what I can get as a long-term rental on the ADU. That's a very strong thing. People are going to go around this ADU prohibition. Might as well just put them in with all the other single-family homes and spare yourself that kind of legal hassle in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Stern.
I live on the Mesa. Okay. So he said a lot of things I was going to say. We live in the same place on the Mesa. I do want to, and I'm totally against the LLCs buying these houses, but we have been, we were running this Airbnb, owner-occupied. We're right. It's connected to our house. These people are quiet as a mouse. I know there were other people that have, like, a lot of noise issues. Sometimes I have to look in the window to see if anyone is really there. So there is another side of the people that are coming to the Mesa. A lot of people want to stay on the Mesa because they don't want to be downtown. They want to be somewhere calm. And I must say, we encourage people to, we highlight Mesa restaurants, and I don't know if Hilton is highlighting any of our Mesa restaurants. And we employ somebody, or we employed, we've been shut down completely, because we have that ADU status. So, and we employ somebody who lives in Santa Barbara. We buy most of our supplies in Santa Barbara. So, and I also want you to realize, as you saw that on the thing, on the chart of ADUs of Airbnbs or short-term rentals going down, you know, that also affects tourism. People who stay in our place are out shopping, eating in restaurants, three meals a day. In the whole time we've had, we've only had it for like two years or a year and a half, no one has ever used the oven. So these people are out spending money in the community, and so when, and it's a more inexpensive way of staying in the community. So I know a lot of people said there were these crazy noisy houses on the Mesa, but I'm telling you, we've never had a complaint. People are like quiet as mice that stay in our place.
Thank you. Patricia Stark.
Good afternoon. My name is Patricia Stark. I live at 1112 Luneta Plaza, a one-block street on the Mesa that now has a total of three illegal short-term vacation rentals. My neighborhood is Zoned E3 Coastal Residential. And before I say anything else, I just want to thank the council. I want to thank city staff for your efforts up till now. I've got three minutes of carefully researched comments, which I'm not going to be able to use, because pretty much all the points have been made or have been addressed in the reports that you gave today. But I do want to commandeer my time to make a point, and that is, nothing has worked up till now for our neighborhood. Several people have spoke today. We've been playing whack-a-mole for two years. And I'll just very briefly outline a few of the things that happened. We have made numerous complaints to the Santa Barbara Police Department. We have contacted the city planning department and other departments no fewer than six times. We have shown up in person at the planning department twice. And in all of this time, over the course of months, we were never notified that short-term vacation rentals are not actually allowed in our neighborhood. Couple of, so let me, I just made, I made four points here that I think maybe have not been touched before. So the first one is, city staff just simply needs to provide clear, more helpful information to beleaguered neighbors when they approach the city for help. As I pointed out, we've made numerous points of contact before we even knew that we had a leg to stand on, okay? Police department told us at one point that if there were numerous noise complaints, they could shut the Airbnb, I mean, the vacation rental down. I don't think that's actually true. At one point, the property owner, who is a prominent real estate agent in town and advertises himself as an expert on selling property for short-term rentals, at one point, he proposed to do an ADU. When we went to the city to complain about it, we were told it was two separate processes. First, the ADU goes through, then we deal with the short-term rental. But I see up here that ADUs are not allowed for short-term rentals. Why would that be two separate processes? I want to support host-only home stays. I mean, I'm sorry, I don't have the right terminology, but the host-only stays. Please raise the fines. Again, whack-a-mole, it's ineffective. You know, we've worked, we've worked repeatedly with the city attorney's office filing complaints. Things get better for a couple of weeks. They come back culminating it. Last two weekends ago, like Georgia pointed out, a rock band on the property line. And make sure the three departments that you referenced are actually talking to each other. Make sure that finance is talking to building permit, talking to planning, so that across the board, we can get some aggressive and continuous enforcement. Thank you so much.
Tiffany Haller.
Hi, Mayor Rouse, city council members. I've been here for over a decade. Same conversations we keep having every year. I am actually, just want to tell you, my husband and I, we live on the Mesa. We have lived on the Mesa for over 20 years, raised our family in our home. My son is actually a city employee, and I'm grateful for that. But I agree with everyone that has talked up here completely. There's no excuse for an irresponsible host. There's no excuse for a nuisance. There's no excuse for someone not paying the taxes or collecting them. Absolutely. I 100% agree. We have a property management company. My husband and I are fixtures on the Mesa. We're fixtures in West Beach. We have followed every rule, every law. We have decibel meters. We have everything to protect the neighborhood. Every single neighbor that is around any property that we manage has our card, knows us on a first-name basis, and knows about our kids, okay? So this, we have a perfect opportunity right now with what city staff has done to have a framework that the whole entire world could use. We have an opportunity to get everyone involved. There is no win-win. You know, we all need to work together and solve this together. There's answers for all of these issues. We lived, Mayor Rouse, you remember, we had a house across the street from my house that was a sober living home. It was horrible living next to it, and there was nothing we could do about it. Then it got replaced with 10 college students. Nothing we could do about it. So just to basically pigeonhole short-term rentals as the horrible, bad, everything that is bad, the reason grocery prices are up, everything, is just not fair, because there are responsible management companies. There are responsible hosts, and together, we can just work together to solve this problem. I mean, I hope that you're going to ask us to, for our input, because we don't want to ruin neighborhoods. I live in the neighborhood. We have, we have other owners that manage their homes themselves and do leave town for the summer, and we're having to intervene. That's not being responsible, okay? So, just want to end, I want to make sure I didn't leave anything off. Just really quick on the enforcement. It's great. You're right. It's great that you guys have raised all this money with enforcing. I am 100% in favor of that. However, there's an easy, simple way to stop it, and it's to require the license number in order to list on these booking sites. It could happen like that in one day. It happened in Hawaii. It has happened all over. So please, we could spend all this time and years doing this, but we could just require Airbnb and VRBO to have a license number to stay on their site. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Black.
Mayor Rouse and council members, my name is Diane Black, and I'm representing the League of Women Voters. Thank you for this update today. As you all know, short-term rental enforcement and regulations are important, as short-term rentals reduce the inventory of housing available for people who live here and should be living here. The League supports the Housing Element programs that recognize the detriment of short-term rentals on the city's housing stock, and we do want to be part of the outreach program. We weren't listed in the staff report, but I ran into Laura. So, in terms of the enforcement program, we fully support the successful efforts to enforce, and we are glad that you've made that a permanent program. The money spent on enforcement far exceeds the costs of the program. We support staffing up at whatever rate you can, so that you can increase timely enforcement and gain compliance. And we support penalty monies collected as a result of enforcement being set aside for affordable housing. On the short-term rental ordinance, you were asked four questions, and I'm just going to give you what my answers would be if I were sitting in your chair, or what the league's answers would be. On the permit process, I wouldn't make it any easier to get a short-term rental permit, keep them being treated as a hotel in zoned districts where they would be allowed. In terms of prohibited uses, I would remove hotel uses and short-term rentals from the multi-unit zones. Those zones should be for housing for our community and not for visitors. On home shares, now I'm going to get into my more personal experience with this. I think it's an enforcement nightmare. I think conceptually it's a positive thing, but I think enforcement will prove to be pretty difficult. And then on the fourth, whether it should just be hosted home shares, given the same concerns about enforcement, yes, I would say if you're going to allow home shares, they should be hosted, only hosted home shares. You know, people want to leave for the summer, they're teachers or whatever, they can rent out their house for three months, and they don't need a short-term rental permit. So I think there are ways for people to be able to use their homes when they're not there. In terms of ADUs, this wasn't something I was proposing to address. I strongly support your staff's recommendation that ADUs not be allowed to be used as short-term rentals. That's not why they were permitted, that they were permitted to address a long-term housing need for the community, not to host people who want to come and play in Santa Barbara. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lynda Benson.
Yes, my name is Lynda Benson, and I do not live on the Mesa. First of all, I'm just a lowly renter. I have a studio apartment on Annapamoo. The neighbor on the one side of me on Annapamoo at 330 is one of the people that shares in the property with the property manager Denise Dietro and with the owner Edwin Quackenbush. She, the woman who lives at 330, for 11 years that I've lived there, she goes off to Spain for five, for five weeks. Somebody's in that stu, in her cot, now she's in a cottage. So there's nine studio apartments and two bungalows. So she's in a bungalow. She travels a lot. People are in and out, you know, and we share a laundry room. Who is this, you know? Now, I am really frustrated that we are forced to be the enforcers of this. Am I going to confront her and say, "Do you have a permit to do this?" If you're going to have, I mean, I just think the whole thing should be banned. You know, I'm just going to go to, there should be no short-term rentals here in Santa Barbara, period. Eliminate all the problems, okay? Then the man on the other side of me at 334 Annapamoo, I know that there are people coming in and out, and, you know, it's not when they just go on vacation. There's always people coming in and out. But I like the neighbors. But still, it's on me to report them? This program does not work. I'm sorry. It just doesn't work. Ban the whole thing, okay? Now, I had this conversation with my property manager today, and she said, "Why don't you move?" I said, "If you try to evict me, I'm going to sue you." I said, "I, you know, we just can't deal with people coming in and out. It just doesn't work. I've paid my rent for 11 years. I deserve peace and quiet. Let me repeat again. It's Edwin Quackenbush property. If she evicts me, I want to know who has a place for me to live." Okay?
Thank you. Samantha Ergeland.
Hi, Mayor and city council members. I've been up here many times before. I'm speaking to express my strong opposition to the proposed changes to the short-term rental program aimed at further limiting SDRs in residential areas. As the owner and operator of Vacation Rentals of Santa Barbara for over 19 years, I've witnessed the positive impact that short-term rentals have on our city. And I do have empathy for everyone out here that has not had positive impacts, and I feel really bad for people that do this in an egregious, horrible way, but there are ways to do it that work. And so, I just want to say I do have empathy. There are things, supporting tourism, generating TOT, which has significantly helped our budget, creating jobs, sustaining local businesses. I personally hire over five cleaning crews that clean every single day in the city. And these benefits come with responsible management and community engagement, which many local operators, including myself, and like Tiffany Heller, are committed to. We are committed. We're not the bad guys. We're the ones trying to find solutions. We want to be part of the solution. Please tap us for this. We want to be part of it. My biggest problem, and I know- My biggest problem, and I know, Kristin, you mentioned this, is that the belief that reducing SDRs will free up housing for full-time residents. It is not in alignment with reality. It's not in alignment with my reality. I manage over 83 homes, and almost 100% of those are owned by individuals, not LLCs. They are second homes, they are retirement homes, homes that people have purchased, they want to come and enjoy Santa Barbara and eventually live here permanently. This act will not cause them to turn it over to long-term unfurnished housing, nor are they likely to sell. It's probably going to sit empty. So these homes will remain unavailable to the local market regardless of policy changes. Santa Barbara already has a highly restrictive STR policy, and further limiting the sector will not increase housing, it will simply reduce economic activity, property rights, and income to the city. I urge the council to preserve what little STR we have, make it reasonably managed, work with us that want to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we have speakers online.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, let me list the names. We have Charlie Car, Charlie Carnow, Anna Arcey-Carnow, if that is the sec, if that is the same person, you can only answer, you only need to answer once, Jonah Breslau, David Solis, and Steve Fort. So Charlie Carnow, please go ahead.
Thank you. This is Charlie Carnow with Unite Here Local Levin, the Hospitality Workers Union, and we, we are here to urge you to prioritize preserving our housing stock when considering new short-term rental regulations. Our union represents over 30,000 workers in California in the hospitality industry, and the cost of housing is one of the biggest challenges our membership faces. So we support robust regulation of SDRs. Santa Barbara's regulations currently require public hearings to convert existing housing to hotel-like short-term rentals. We, we agree with extending this, the ban on short-term rentals, the RM and RMH zones in the inland portion of Santa Barbara, and otherwise support maintaining existing regulations, which correctly apply zoning rules to short-term rentals. So we do not support home sharing outside the, in the inland area where you have full regulatory authority, the current model we believe is working. In the coastal zone, we agree with staff that unhosted home sharing should not be allowed, and you should not allow ADUs to be shared. Unho, unhosted home sharing does not necessarily provide affordable access to the coast, but it does take away from our housing stock. Hosted home sharing is more likely to ensure appropriate supervision of the property and its occupants and allays community safety and nuisance concerns. To insist on enforcement of the ordinance, we urge you to allow enforcement of a private right of action for any civil penalties, like they do in Santa Monica, and they're moving toward in West Hollywood, as well as electronic registration so that booking platforms will only allow bookings to proceeds for lawful hotels, short-term rentals, and home sharing in Santa Barbara. Thank you so much, and thank you to staff for all your work.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Anna Arcey. Please go ahead. Anna Arcey, you can unmute yourself and go ahead.
Thank you. Okay? So thank you for the opportunity to comment on the city's consideration of home share regulations and short-term rentals. I want to express support for staff's recommendation to exclude home shares from the short-term rental ordinance at this time. The concerns raised around enforcement, inspection, and neighborhood compatibility are real and significant. Allowing entire units to operate as short-term rentals risks further increasing our already strained long-term rental housing supply. We need to be focused on protecting and preserving existing rental units for long-term use. Homes should first serve workers and families who need stability, not be converted into short-term vacation rentals. The reality is that short-term profits are incentivizing the conversion of residential units into commercial uses, further increasing rental housing costs and reducing availability for local residents. We also support staff efforts to explore tools for permit tracking, funding for enforcement, cost support staffing to ensure more timely investigation, compliance, and overall process. It is also essential that any licensing system includes strong oversight and adequate resources to address the challenges with enforcement and privacy concerns raised by staff. As we move forward, I urge the city council to continue to prioritize policies that promote long-term housing preservation. This is a key step to ensuring that our neighborhoods remain livable and our housing market remains accessible to those who live and work here year-round. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Jonah Breslau. After that, David Solis and Steve Fort. Jonah Breslau, please go ahead. Jonah Breslau, you can unmute yourself and go ahead. Okay, we can come back to Jonah Breslau. Next, David Solis. David Solis, please go ahead.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Mayor, City Council members, and city staff, thank you for your time and for the work you've done to present and address this important issue. It is clear that short-term rentals in Santa Barbara need to be thoughtfully managed and limited. At the same time, it is equally clear that not all SDRs are the same. Broadly speaking, we have three categories: compliant SDRs, registered within the city, paying TOT tax, and operating without noise or nuisance violations, on par, and then, and not in violation of any city codes. Problem SDRs either registered but undocumented nuisance or operating without a permit at all. That's the second category. A fair and effective approach must distinguish between these groups. One practical solution is to cap SDRs on a per capita basis by the neighborhoods. This would protect the community character and limit the over-investor concentration. At the same time, law-abiding SDRs that have been registered and paying tax would be grandfathered in, preserving their ability to operate while preventing their permits from transferring to new owners on sale. That would protect reasonably operated, naturally reducing STR numbers over time. Now, you may wonder, what are the real values? You said them yourself in your presentation. STR bring in over $2.6 million, and it seems like that was not something in a short period of time. Obviously, the tourism diversity is huge. SDRs offer lodging options for families and visitors who want to extend its stays or more of a group and gathering environment. Property rights, many owners, including retirees and working families, depend on this, this income. And then regulation versus prohibition. Well-run SDRs like Tiffany's, they are, you know, they are not adversely affecting the neighborhood. So in closing, let's manage vacation rentals in a way that protects neighborhoods, preserves tourism benefits, and upholds property rights. Grandfathering compliant tax-paying operators while capping future permits on a per-neighborhood basis strikes a balance between community needs and economic fairness. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Steve Fort. Steve Fort, please go ahead.
All right, thank you. Yeah, Steve Fort, 816 Grove Lane. And I just want to continue to reiterate support from my wife and I to enforce against short-term rentals and go after them in the coastal zone as well. Completely concur with Diane Black's previous comments, and I hope you take to heart the comments that people were making who are affected by these, who have no recourse. When it's, a short-term rental comes into your neighborhood, the impacts are all shifted on the remainder of the neighborhood. We don't want your business card and a number to call when there's a problem. We just want peace and quiet. We want houses in neighborhoods, not hotels. It, it, it's pretty, pretty frustrating to hear that, oh, prominent realtors in the community are engaged in the short-term rental business with no regard for quality of life in the neighborhoods, no regard for the housing crisis that we know is up, is going on. And in terms of people who have second homes, or they have a retirement home that they purchased that they wanted to rent out, well, let's just ban short-term rentals and make sure that everybody knows that you can't buy a house to use it as a short-term rental, and maybe that will help address part of what's going on with the housing crisis. Again, we support enforcement, increased enforcement, banning them in the coastal zone, everything Diane Black said, fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Final speaker, Jonah Breslau. Jonah Breslau, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Ross in Santa Barbara City Council. My name's Jonah Breslau. I work at, you know, your Local Levin, the Hospitality Workers Union in California and Arizona, and I wanted to echo my colleague Charlie Carnow's concerns and emphasize in particular that, you know, in our view, short-term rentals do not necessarily create affordable access to the coast. And in the light of the housing crisis that is affecting hospitality workers throughout the state of California, we do feel it is very important to have robust regulation of short-term rentals, and we urge the city to take action accordingly. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that's the final speaker, Mr. Mayor.
That was the final speaker, very good. We'll come back to council now. Once again, questions and/or deliberative comments are welcome at this time. Mr. Friedman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question, and then I'll, or actually two. On the issue of ADUs, if an ADU that is now a housing was to become a vacation rental, would that affect the number of housing credits we have for RENA? So essentially, would it reduce our RENA numbers? And would we have to make those up if the answer is yes?
Mayor Ross and Councilmember Jordan, so if it was already counted towards RENA in our annual accounting to the state, and it became a short-term rental, I don't know if we would even be able to track that and reduce it from our RENA count. I think it just gets counted once, and you move forward. So, yeah. If that answers your question.
I could, I could see problems with that in the, in the future, that the state might, there are always changes in the housing laws every year, so that might be something in the future.
Correct.
They would change, and we'd actually get further behind on that. If you could just quickly pull up Slide 21, and it gets back to the questions from the previous part of the presentation on the, I think it was 21, on the increase in the fine, would it be possible to increase the, the fine for, no, the first one, sorry, yeah, the first presentation?
We're getting there. Of course.
Okay, I just want to be sure that that's part of the direction we could give today in input, is I'm interested in increasing the fine to make it more stringent for those who are violators, so.
And Councilmember Friedman, that could actually come back before the ordinance comes back. So if, if that is the direction from council today, we could bring that back as a separate fee schedule item.
Okay. Oh, I'll just say I want to do that. So, all right, those are all the, the questions I really had, so I'll just start going to my comments. First, want to thank our staff, both on the ordinance side and the enforcement side. It's a lot of work that, that goes into it, and for giving some solid options. It's been a long haul to get here. I know a lot of us are getting a lot of complaints in our neighborhoods on this, Mike Jordan and I in particular in the coastal zone, almost on a daily basis. And so I want to, I actually want to start with a little counter to one of the comments that was made on the issue of whether or not we would, converting SDRs back into housing would actually increase our housing stock. One of the, the benefits of my other job is it really informs me about what's going on, on the ground in neighborhoods with all my coworkers and friends and the community that comes in. And for those who keep asking me, by the way, I will be back to that other job later this month. It's the number one question I get out when I'm walking my dog Morgan Friedman every morning. So I want to give you this story because I think it gets to what we're talking about today. So this happened about 10 days ago. One of my coworkers called me up, and he said that a few months back, his neighbor got evicted, and the neighbor's gone, and the owner of the property next door to him turned it into a vacation rental. And the access to that vacation rental, or that property, is not very clear, so immediately, every time it was rented out, the people would come on his property every day that it was rented out, would go along his property. He raised it a number of times with the property owner, wasn't really getting a response, and so they had a meeting set up for last week. So he had called me up just to really understand, you know, what, what his rights were and, and everything, so he could be informed about, you know, to try to enter a negotiation to keep the people off his property at least. But during that time, he had filed a complaint with the city, and one of you guys over there that gave the presentation earlier, one of your staff went out. It turns out it was an illegal vacation rental. And this is just a few, like a week ago, he called me up and said, I don't need any more information from you. Apparently, your, your guys went in there, and I got an email from the neighbor, and he said he is taking the vacation rental off the market, and he's going to be rerunning it as a long-term rental once again. So that's a true story, and it just happened within the last two weeks. So I just wanted to, to share that. The other issue is whether or not it would increase, you know, housing prices, and that's, that is debatable because of where we are, there's always a pressure. But one thing we cannot compete against, and we being people who want to live here or homes, is the fact that we are competing not against other people who want to own homes, but we're competing against multinational corporations, hotels that offer homes on the Mesa as part of their bonus points for using their credit cards and everything, and you go online, and there's dozens of them. People cannot compete against the major hotel chains that are offering Santa Barbara homes for rent. It's just impossible. So that contributes to the cost of housing here. I don't know how much it would go down, but it definitely, it definitely doesn't make, make it any cheaper. So I just want to put all that out there. So like I was saying, Mike Jordan and I in particular, with the coastal zone, we have areas that are coastal high-fire zone and others. That's a concern that is being expressed because when you have a lot of people that are coming into neighborhoods, sometimes big parties, sometimes they have buses that are coming into some of these areas, and it's a high-fire zone, there's a public safety threat because people don't know their neighborhood, and they're not, and like we had, they don't vacation the same way we live. Obviously, I don't, I'll admit it, I don't think anybody does. But on the Mesa, in Braemar and Allen Road and those neighborhoods, there's really unique circumstances. Allen Road in particular has a couple of short-term vacation rentals, and that is one way in, one way out, and they are very concerned about fire access and safety. So they know what to do, but if you have 10, 20, 30 people, 30 cars in there because of vacation rentals, it could create a very serious public safety issue. And so I want to take time to thank all the residents in, in the Mesa and Braemar, Yankee Farm, Allen Road area, who have been in constant engagement with myself and Mike Jordan on this issue. A lot of you wrote emails today because it's important that the full council has that information for the record and our staff, because that's a nuance that I think gets lost on this, is the, the very real public health and safety, especially as it relates to fire with these. So today, I'm, I'd say there's four specific reasons, there's more, but four that I would just like to say that, why we need to move forward with this, this ordinance. One is the coastal zone needs protection now. Can't wait any longer. Neighborhoods throughout the city are negatively impacted, we heard that today. We have emails constantly that show that. The current status quo is reducing housing stock, and there are major public health and safety impacts in high-fire zones in particular. You know, Mike Jordan and I, Councilmember Jordan and I, had, had brought this item to council about a year ago to try to figure out for the council to move this forward, and we all agreed, and it was a very good move. It's taken a little bit longer than we had hoped, but today we need to take action and avoid any further delays on implementing changes that the vast majority of the public in the city supports. As to the home shares... As to the home shares, I'm open to, well, first I'll say allowing unoccupied home shares is problematic for the enforcement and other reasons. And it would also undermine the effort to try to control some of these innerneighbor conflicts if there was somebody, if they were unoccupied, unhoseded home shares. In addition, it would continue to have the neighborhood impacts and puts, it puts the burden, some of the members of public today said that it would put the burden on the public to monitor their neighbors and file complaints. That shouldn't be your responsibility. And I get that there are those that are responsible, but there's a lot that aren't responsible. And that's what we're talking about here. And it's unfortunate because I think there are good operators, but there's a lot that aren't. And it shouldn't fall at 3:30 in the morning on somebody who's lived in their home for many years and someone comes in and buys the home next to them to have to call the police, wait an hour, and basically get no relief from it and then have to repeat it again the next weekend and the next. And it's also, that creates a disruptive system between neighbors. It pits neighbor against neighbor in times. It diminishes the community that we all hope to build in our neighborhoods. In terms of the owner occupied home share, where they're on-premise, I am open to that. I think there are some benefits to it. Other communities have done it. There might be some enforcement challenges, but they're not as prevalent as if it was unhosted. It also allows, for me, this is a big one. That program would allow vulnerable populations, including seniors, like a widow in that case, who needs extra income to stay in their home to be able to rent that out and make extra income. That's something, you know, have a limited income based on social security, retirement, all that. And to be able to have that extra income could be the difference between them staying in their home or not. So I think it's definitely worth that from, just for that reason alone. It also provides more controls and limits on unacceptable behavior if the owner is on-site. And it also forces that owner to take more responsibility. And then in terms of the coastal zone, I went back and forth on it because I know that, you know, people could try to game the system. But I came to the same conclusion on the hosted home shares. In particular, because of the Coastal Commission and the Coastal Commission's position that we need to provide coastal access. And I, this, I think, would help in that terms because it allows some coastal access. So I think it would help us get through the Coastal Commission process to have it rather than not. And for me, getting the best possible proposal before the Coastal Commission is extremely important so we can get those protections. And I think, and this would help us with that argument. And then, and the bottom line is we need to, we need an ordinance that works constructively with where the Coastal Commission is. And I think having that is a constructive way to work with the Coastal Commission. And I am wrapping up the proposed map. It is pleasing to hear that conversations have already taken place with the Coastal Commission staff on the boundaries of the proposal that we came up with last year. Fully support the additions on there for the, we don't want to have to do local coastal plan amendments. We want to keep it simple. And those seem to make sense. And again, they're not within the neighborhoods. And then the last is I, on those questions, I think it's pretty obvious where I stand. I don't want to make it any easier. And then, and I want to modify it to the neighborhoods that where the red was and try to take those out of the residential neighborhoods. So with that, I'm looking forward to giving the direction so we can get this going, get the inland taken care of, provide the certainty, and also get the coastal, get the coastal zone process underway because it's still a long ways to go. And, but those communities are depending on us up here at council to get that going for them. So I'm supportive of the plan put forward today.
Mr. Jordan.
Could just say what he said, right? So I think I'd be embarrassed probably to say this publicly, which means automatically I'm going to say it and admit that five and a half years ago, this was one of the top five things on my list when I was elected. Well, personally, my personal opinion and talking to people. And I'm going to go get a Lotto ticket on the way home tonight. So just to get this far and have this discussion has been a slog, as I frequently say. And I'm very apologetic to some of you who still don't get the nuances of our inability to act and the difference between not allowed and not not allowed, and what that really looks like. And even in our, in our staff report, we have maps that just started the whole conversation again. You told me they are allowed here, but it's in a not allowed zone. And just how can that be? And, you know, there was a time, shoot, a decade ago, when we had one department enforcing while one department was accepting the same people's money. So it's just been a long miserable pathway. You have a couple of questions. So the shrinking of, potential shrinking, there was a map you showed that I didn't see or couldn't find anywhere. I have the, I have a blow-up of the big map already of the downtown corridor area where we allow them now. And then there was another map on making that less wide, right?
Removal of the RMH.
Yeah, and so, do I have any idea, whatever, just in spirit of some fairness, do we have any idea of existing hotel projects in where you would reduce the zones you would pull that are in the pipeline and where they are in the pipeline? I know we've done that exercise in the past, probably a year or two ago when we first talked about this. And I'm just wondering what the casualties are right now.
That's a really good question, but, go ahead. Yeah, we don't have that data right now. You're interested in what? Is it pending short-term rental or application or pending hotel?
No, pending hotel.
Pending hotel, please.
And I'm not like talking about, go down Chapala and somebody's got like a used car lot that's been approved like 10 years ago when I was on planning commission and it's still sitting there as a used car lot. I'm talking about something that we could determine, you know, has met our, whatever our current application of deemed complete is. And we see it moving forward and it's just not a stale application sitting there. And is it fair to have put that person through? We've had this conversation before. Is it fair to put that person through the process and the expense and just pull the wool out from under them?
So Councilmember Jordan, we don't have that data right now, but we can get back to you with it. And often when we pass these new ordinances, there's a grace period or projects that are up to a certain point get to continue on. So that could be a discussion when we get to that point.
I think we did that when we did the emergency thing. And we had a list of those and we exempted some level of completeness and discarded others.
Correct. Yeah, we could do something similar.
I would be interested in supporting that type of review again, just not to tell somebody who spent a half a million or a million dollars on a commercial project that was in the zone that allowed it, that they can no longer go forward. And then, true or not, because I still think it's true. And I think you've heard it from a couple of people in the audience today that one of the drawbacks we've had in being basically ignored and just dissed by the online platforms is we don't have an ordinance for short-term vacation rentals. We have an ordinance for hotels where we basically just added in the word "short-term vacation rentals" to become. And having a specific ordinance for short-term vacation rentals, doesn't that actually put us in a better or equal bargaining position with the online platforms to require them to only list permitted properties on their platform?
Councilmember Jordan, I can jump in a little bit on that because we have had conversations with the platforms. And they would be receptive to putting our, the short-term rentals on their platforms if, as you say, we had an ordinance and a permit process. So if they were actually permitted currently, except for the ones in the hotel zones that have been permitted, they're not permitted.
Okay. And I think last question is, whatever we do or don't do, there's either a continuing expense or a new bureaucracy. We get, you know, I'm here from the government. I'm here to help you, right? What's the pathway towards recouping that in increasing TOT specifically for permitted short-term vacation rentals?
Councilmember Jordan, so increasing the TOT would require voter approval.
Correct.
So going through that, that would be the process to increase the TOT.
And is there, is there nothing improper or illegal about saying these present a bigger burden administratively to the city outside of the scope of 100 years ago when we put TOT in place and we can justify, whatever, two, three points of increased TOT specifically to go to offset that greater burden on the city?
You can, you can make, the problem with it, if it was specific to short-term vacation rentals, is that that might become a special type tax, which would require a higher voter approval.
I think maybe to address Councilmember Jordan's concern, looking at our permit fees for the short-term vacation rentals and just sort of assuring that those are high enough. Because that's where we would be able to tie the costs of providing the permitting process. And so that, versus TOT and where we'd have to go to a vote of the people if we looked at the fees or the permitting fees associated with the short-term rentals.
So I'm interested in that. I don't think this stuff all works in a vacuum. I think we're happy to make it look a little better, but at the same time, I don't think it's a normal burden we need to put on ourselves. So I think mostly, I'm in agreement with everything that Councilmember Friedman talked about. Adding some type of touch on hotels in the pipeline, what that looks like, what level of progress they're at, what the casualty rate is, is that acceptable casualty rate? I would shrink that red area as far as possible, as we can actually. It still seems like a big area to me also that there's certainly some, while they may not be single-family neighborhoods, there are certainly some look-like single-family neighborhoods in that red area. And so it's just, I think if you wanted to talk about what that looked like, that would be great. And, you know, I tell my wife all the time, we are Santa Barbara. When we have moments like this, why are we where we're at? We're like, in some cases, a decade or more behind other cities that have successfully done this. That's the bad news. The good news is, I think you referenced already, Laura, that we had plenty of stuff to go look at on how to run successful programs and what good neighbor guidelines look for those programs and check sheets and qualifiers. But it's high time we get on this. Everything that you talked about, the erosion of neighborhoods, the erosion of neighbor to neighbor, the inability to contact somebody if you've got a problem. You know, I'm, I am pretty lackadaisical, you know? My neighbor has a boat in the backyard. I have chickens, okay? So it's just like, you work those things out when it's a neighbor and you have no opportunity to work this out in the situations that exist out there in the neighborhoods. Braemar is not in my district, but I hear plenty with them, with Eric. And Braemar is also kind of unique too because the lots are bigger. And so it attracts people who are looking for short-term vacation rental uses where they can actually host events in the backyards because it's not your little 5,000 or 7,500 or 1,100 square foot lot on, in a neighborhood, 11,000 square foot lot, whatever it is. But it might be a half acre. And it is no lie that tour buses pull up with a couple hundred people to have an event at a short-term vacation rental in that neighborhood. And let's see, five years ago, I met Theo Crackey. Lives up above Cliff Drive in my district. So, great guy. And I would say to the people who run successful programs that don't bother their neighbors and do all the right things is that there's a reason we have stop signs. And that's because I will stop at the stop sign or at a intersection if it looks like I should stop. But there are some people who won't. And so there's going to be some casualty for people who run great programs, do everything they should. Or like Theo Crackey had a ironclad contract of use with his people, 24/7 live-body staff, everything you could want. There are many, many more people who don't operate that way. And our job is to solve that problem by putting rules and procedures in place that benefit the most people most of the time, not that worry about the least people most of the time. So you're going to want the answers to your questions. Inland, I would only support host onsite short-term vacation rental, if that's what you want to call it. I can't support, after thinking about it further and talking to people, an unhoseded short-term vacation rental for any period of time, short, long, whatever it is. I think it's been made really clear to me that the key is being able to go over and knock on a door and talk to the person who's running the short-term vacation rental of a problem. And you will not have that problem either, or you will not have that exist for a non-hosted owner on the premises, either in the inland or the coastal zone. So in both of those zones, I think I would support a hosted, host is onsite, short-term vacation rental. And then I like the proposed.
Home share.
Sorry, home share, sorry.
Our terminology.
I'll write that down. And then I would support your map. I think you've done a great job with the map and you're going to get there in a pathway that doesn't involve probably going in and revising five other ordinances to do spot zoning. It's just, I think the places that you've added in the blue there, we can live with that zoning that's there without real consequences. One of them is all-city college, you know? And the other is, in my district, is the Mesa Shopping Center intersection. I'm okay there, okay? The focus for me is on single-family neighborhood, on residential neighborhoods. It could be more than single-family. And then I think in the inland areas, I think we owe a responsibility to grandfather in the actual permitted five or whatever it is in those areas, that they did what we told them to do. And the number's pretty negligible. And just so, I know we use permitted, allowed, allowed, not allowed, not not allowed, that kind of thing. But permitted, I mean, is they, you know what I mean. They have a permit to operate as a, as a short-term vacation rental. And I would say the same in the coastal zone. The somewhere up to 10 that exists there now that have actually gone through the equivalent of the hotel permitting process and been permitted for a short-term vacation rental, that they get grandfathered in as legal non-conforming. And once they decide they're going to do something else with that property, then we can address that and bring it into conformity. Your other, one of your other questions was, I know we talked about it in my briefing, this concept of how it was before to go through a hotel process to concert a residential use to a commercial. I just don't like any of that at all. I just think, to as much as you can stomach it, I think we continue to call home shares and we continue to call coastal zone short-term vacation rentals residential properties so that they don't have to jump through the hoops that are normally associated with converting to a commercial operation. That would be my preference. When we travel, that's what we're looking to stay at. We're not looking to stay at something that's got evacuation route with a posted sign on the window or something like that, you know? We think we're going to stay in a residential type of situation when we visit. And that's what I think we should be looking for. I think that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Ross. Well, I'm sort of here to give hope to Mesa residents for the future. This came to council a while ago and for the inland areas. And I represent District Four. And up until that time, it wasn't clear, were these allowed, not allowed, what the rules were. And then once there was clarity that, no, actually, they're not allowed there. rules were, and then once there was clarity that, no, actually, they're not allowed there. On my block, we had five or six, they were having bonfires in a high-fire hazard area. Their kids, they didn't have kids who were walking to school that was in the neighborhood. They were not having eyes on each other to keep us safe, you know? I've had issues where someone was steering our catalytic converter and it was our neighbor who lives across the street, looking out his window, who called the police and is yelling at the guy to get out of here, and we know that we are looking out for each other, and when there were those five in the neighborhood, there were bonfires every weekend. And everybody who lived in that neighborhood, who's paying insurance in that neighborhood, who has evacuated multiple times in those neighborhoods, were on edge every single weekend. And once I learned and we all learned that, no, none of these are legal, it was so easy then to be like, oh, okay, well then, let's call them in. Because if it's not clear, like, I don't know, is that one permitted or not permitted, or I guess they're allowed or not allowed? And I can tell you now, just a few years later, pretty rapidly actually, once we clarified that and those were cleared up, now it's families who are living there, who are living there long-term. They are walking around their neighborhood with their dogs in the evening and in the morning, we're keeping eyes on each other. It's not just that it's a nuisance or that before people were literally urinating on the sides of buildings, it's about the fabric of neighborhoods. And maybe there's one really good operator, maybe they're all really good operators. It doesn't matter. It's taking housing stock out of the neighborhoods, which is not what these neighborhoods were intended to be, especially when you're in walking distance of an elementary school or other schools. It just, it just wrecks the fabric. And so I can just say on the other side, I'm so excited that if this goes forward, what the Mesa, the relief that you're going to experience once you're back to having neighbors living next to you, and that's whether you're a renter, whether you're a homeowner, whether you're, you know, doing, living in an ADU in, in the back. This just is so much better for the housing stock, for communities, for neighborhoods, for kids, for families, and including for aging in place. I mean, I'm a big supporter of aging in place. That's why you can rent out longer-term spaces, that's why you can have an ADU. But also, if you are aging in place, you want your neighborhood to be people who are looking out for you, who notice if you haven't walked the dog, who notice if your house has been dark for a couple days or a day, and checking in on each other. And especially in natural disasters as well. And so I know on the Riviera and the hillsides, people who have a lot of vacancies in between are very concerned, like the speaker who noted that you're the de facto first responder, it's really then on your neighbors to be keeping track of, is there an emergency or how do we evacuate, or is anybody in that house or not? So I'm just really, I'm so grateful that it's so clear, there's clarity, that there are not vacation rentals in the inland, and so I like to just keep it that way. And whether it's hosted or not hosted, I actually don't, or home share or not home share. I initially was maybe more supportive, but I'm thinking about it now and I don't want to go back. And I just recently stayed at, it was so much fun, at a hosted home share in upstate New York on the Hudson River, and it was so much fun, and we were there for a week and out on a veranda, definitely making a lot of noise with different people coming and going for different weddings and different things. But this one was a house and it had the home share there, but it was registered as an inn, so people knew that it was an inn. And I can tell you, the cars, mine own included, coming and going at different times and different people coming and going, and it was so fun because the, the home share person was there and he made it so fun. But being home shared or hosted doesn't mean it's going to be quieter necessarily, or that it's not going to have impacts to the neighbors. So that one was an inn. I, I want to say that it was, I was not, I was not participating in taking away from housing stock in that neighborhood. It was, it was hosted as an inn. So I'm, you know, looking at all of that, I think you can still rent out longer-term. There's the example of a teacher, and, you know, I have a, a teacher colleague who does rent his place out for the entire summer, and that was what makes it so you can stay. Well, you can still do that, it's over 30 days. But also, we heard from a beloved retired teacher in our community today and asking that we not allow this type of a short-term rental. So I think neighborhoods and, and keeping community together is, for me, what this is about. And so just to get to the specifics, clarity, yes, raise the fines, yes. The comment about coordination, I think that's important. We do have the one number to, to report it to, and then follow up from a single point of, from contact would be, is helpful. I do support the higher enforcement fees, higher permitting fees. I think it'll come up later too, but I, I would support a rental registry in general. I really support a ban on them everywhere, that it's legally possible for us to ban them. I mean, unless the Coastal Commission or the state is telling us, you must allow them in this area, I don't see why we need them, especially when our housing stock is so limited. I'm going to add to this that I would support a vacancy tax. We need houses to be homes with people in them. So I realize that's not the direction for today, but as we're talking about that, and you know, we just did an adaptive reuse, and that is to encourage moving from things maybe like hotels that aren't being used so well into housing. So why would we want to do something that incentivizes the, the opposite direction? So everything moving toward, let these spaces be used for housing. So then on the specifics on here, just to make sure it's clear, yes, continue to treat short-term rentals as hotels, and yes, they have to go through the permitting process. I think that's an important part of the process. The inland, it says remove both hotel use and STRs from residential multi-unit and hotel RMH zone. Can you clarify what that question is?
That gets to the map that had the hatched area. That is an RMH zone, and what we're suggesting is that we rewrite the code to disallow hotels and that, and we'll leave it as residential medium density.
Okay. So, so, yes, if that, if that gets us to-
More housing than hotels.
Yes, thank you. And then allowing the home share in all zones, no. I, I think, I, I think we don't, I don't want to go back to having ambiguity about whether that one's allowed or not, is the host home, not home, are they really living there full-time or not? And because of my recent experience, it still impacts even if the, if the resident is there. And they can rent out an ADU, or they could do longer-term rentals. Rent to someone who's a student, rent for a longer period of time. It doesn't need to be a rotating short-term vacation rental. I, I continue to say no to ADUs as short-term rentals. I mean, the whole point of why we encourage ADUs, particularly in like areas that are a little trickier, like high fire, is to the, increase the housing stock, not to increase the hotel stock. And frankly, we have enough hotels and they're not at 100% capacity, so, you know, that does support all the things that people are talking about, like employment and jobs and the economy and, and all of those things. So let's, let's have people go to hotels, and they are allowed in some places, so, you know, they don't have to be allowed in all places to have there be a benefit of being allowed in some places. So really just only where it's mandated, and I would say only if those where they're mandated are also hosted simultaneously. And then, yes, a vacancy tax, and I'll leave it at that.
Ms. Santa Maria.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I'm going to echo some of what my colleagues mentioned, especially with what Councilmember Sneddon mentioned about a, essentially a ban on the short-term rentals, because quite frankly, we're not really getting a benefit that we wouldn't be getting from hotels either way. You know, a hotel already is providing the type of lodging that tourists are looking for. As Councilmember Sneddon said, our hotels are not fully booked either way. I would much rather kick the business to the hotels and have the hotels be able to, you know, they are in the adequate place and with the adequate resources to mitigate nuisance and all of those things, much easier than an individual owner in a residential area, especially if they're not home. I think for, for me at least, the, the name of the game here is accountability and some transparency, enforcement and making sure that we are able to bring peace of mind to our neighborhoods, because that's, that's really what this is. And peace of mind does deal with nuisance, but peace of mind also deals with the stability in the housing market. And I want to make sure that we're supporting our local mom-and-pop housing providers, because when they are trying to rent out a, a long-term rental, as was one of the comments earlier today, if you have to disclose that surrounding that long-term rental is party central, then people won't want to live there if they're looking for quiet enjoyment. And so we want to make sure that these residential neighborhoods stay a residential neighborhood. We have a, a, a wealth of tourists who come in, right? But it, it's not necessarily, I don't think, a requirement for us to have them embedded in our neighborhoods, especially with how cumbersome it is to be able to, to track and, and enforce this, right? So we know that this is already a, a bit of a logistical nightmare, so I, my, my hope is that we simplify this as much as possible. I want to highlight what Councilmember Jordan said about raising the permit fees for short-term rentals. I think that's important, because, I mean, we're, like I said before, the, the allowing of the short-term rentals is not really providing any additional benefit to the city. The additional benefit is to the owner, because they're making extra profit that they wouldn't be making if it was a long-term rental. And I, I can't quite remember who made the comment about if it's removed from the market as a short-term rental, it will just sit vacant. I mean, that is the choice of the owner. If you as an owner would rather sit on that property and not rent it and not get any income, I mean, that, that is a personal choice, but you could, you could, you can still rent it as a long-term rental, so the city's not prohibiting you from doing any of that. So it's, it's on you as the individual, do you want to make some profit or do you want to, you know, sit on it? And if you do, then going back to what Councilmember Sneddon said, it's exactly what vacancy taxes are for municipalities, is we need to make sure all, our housing stock is being used for what is intended. That includes ADUs being intended for long-term rentals. We have too many workers and families crammed into apartments and housing because there just isn't enough housing stock for them to go out and get a place of their own. I know there was another point also about requiring the business license to be on Airbnb and other listing sites. I think that's a great idea. We need to make sure that every, every, every rental, quite honestly, I, I think this opens a broader conversation for both short-term and long-term rentals. Every rental in our city is a business and operates as a business, so they should have a business license. That, that simple as that. There needs to be permitting and it needs to be something that is transparent and visible to whoever is booking and something that the city can also keep track of. The last thing I'll say is, I think, or to the, to the actual questions, right? So continuing to treat short-term rentals as hotels in terms of permitting, I think, I think I would be in favor of, of just, just keep them as, as hotels, keep them as they are. That is, that is essentially their, their purpose and that is how they're functioning. I would support removing both hotel use and short-term rentals from the residential multi-unit and hotel zone. And then as far as home share goes, I, I'm in favor of, of a home share program with a host. I, I think that that is part of your individual rights as somebody who is occupying a property. And I, I do see here, so the question is allow hosted home share only, i.e. owner must always be present onsite, or also allow non-hosted home shares. The reason I read this is because I think the language here is very important. I, my recommendation or my preference would be for us to remove the word owner, and here's why. You can have the owner in, in, in the unit and they rent out a room, that is the most common, but, I mean, if you think about it, you also have the, you know, the, the scenario of a teacher who is renting out a spare room or, you know, a, a senior citizen who is on fixed income and is rent, is renting out another room so that they can, you know, upkeep with costs. But I think as long as you have, as long as you have an agreement with your landlord of your tenant, you should also be able to rent out a room if you're a tenant, even if you're not the owner, if that is your primary residence. That is what I'm hoping we can accomplish with this home share program, is if it's your primary residence and you have a spare room or two, you should be able to rent that out, right? And I think it's, a lot of these programs that, or initiatives that we try to, to accomplish at the city, sometimes we let the, the tenant class fall through the cracks and the benefit is only for if you're the owner, right? And so I want to make sure that we have owners and tenants who can benefit from this type of home share program. So if we could make it a, a hosted home shares where it, the person whose primary residence is, is present, that, maybe that could be some sort of language. I'm not in favor at all of non-hosted home share programs. If it walks and talks like a short-term rental, it's a short-term rental, and I think they should be treated as such. And let me see if there's any other direction you were asking for. I do think it's important for us to look, more in general as, as a city, to look at how we are both keeping track of these short-term rentals and how we're enforcing, because I, I really want to commend our staff. You're all doing such an incredible job in keeping track of so much data and working cross-agencies to do this. My hope would be to, you know, in collaboration, of course, with, with all of our staff, is to create a more simplified process even within our city staff, have a centralized location where all of the information is for rentals, their business license, you know, their, their costs, whether, you know, they're registered, listed, occupied or not. I mean, these are things that, there's different departments clearly working on this, but I think maybe a consolidated effort would be something that is helpful both for, for now, but also even thinking about long-term rentals. Because there are a lot of things that we also have to keep track of with long-term, I know right now we're talking about short terms, right? But like I said, this is opening up a, a, in my opinion, a much broader conversation about how we keep track of things in our city when it comes to our housing stock. Because the only way that we're going to dig ourselves out of the hole of this housing crisis is really getting a good grasp of the issue and understanding what's going on. And the only way really to do that is to have reliable data that is transparent and easily accessible within our staff, within our city, but also to the average person, you know? If, if a, if a person, you know, either a neighbor or a tenant or a vacationer is able to look up and see, did I rent something that was actually registered with the city? You know, it'd be, it'd be really good for us to be able to look that up, because if, you know, we don't want to leave it on, you know, the average neighbor at 3:00 in the morning trying to get ahold of someone and saying, is this permitted or not? But if we could have a, you know, some way of looking up, and it doesn't have to be identifiable information, right? Could just be looking it up through the business license number, but even just checking, is there a business license for this? If not, could submit a report to the city. But, you know, just, just wanting to throw out some ideas, but I'm, I'm really hoping that we can sort of streamline the enforcement, but very much in favor with what our staff recommendations have been with the direction I detailed out earlier, so thank you all again.
Ms. Harman.
Thank you, Ms., excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I will start as my colleagues have in expressing my appreciation that this is coming forward and, and appreciation for the community members who have really stuck with it, sharing your concerns and the implications for you really on the day-to-day. I would say, generally speaking, I, I share the concern that you've heard every, every person up here articulate. And I, I feel a particular responsibility around ameliorating this problem, not only because we've heard it so much in Santa Barbara, the impacts to our community, but I hear it up and down the state as a member of the Coastal Commission, about the impact specifically of short-term rentals on our coastal communities and how it's really changing the character of coastal California. So I feel a great responsibility that we, we figure out how to manage this problem, this issue effectively. With that, I'm just going to jump in. My notes are a little bit all over the place, but I want to respond to some of the things that we've heard, and of course, to the questions that staff put forth. So first, on the map on Slide 24, this red area, I agree, I think it was Councilmember Jordan's who said, let's shrink that red area. I mean, I understand that the cross-hatching is shrinking it, but to the extent we can shrink it more, on the one hand, I, I think yes, absolutely. But I do want to just put out there, you know, there's been a lot of important conversation about how people in neighborhoods have kids who walk on the sidewalk and want to walk their dogs. You know what? We also have those things downtown, and there are implications for those of us who live in that area, the further that we push the short-term rentals, all- in that area, the further that we push the short-term rentals, all of them, into that space, uh, the less likely it is that those of us who live downtown and who are trying to build community downtown, where it's already challenging to do that, where we already have very high turnover rates, um, it's going to become more and more difficult for us. And so I am, I want to be cognizant of that. Um, we talk about not having them in the neighborhoods. I don't want them in my neighborhood either. Um, and that is essentially what we are doing by pushing them downtown. And I will say, you know, a lot of people respond when I make that statement and say, well, there's hotels in your neighborhood. Absolutely right, but Councilmember Santa Maria was spot-on when she said that hotels are better equipped to manage the consequences of regular and iterative visitations by guests than, um, my next-door neighbor might be. So I, I think that's kind of a, a false, um, a false choice, that you, um, have hotels and STRs or, um, not at all. And so I, I understand, we, we have to have some, um, constraints that we're putting around this, and I accept that, um, on balance, it probably makes the most sense to have them. But I, I just, I do continue to have those concerns, and I would say, um, to the extent we can continue to shrink it more and more toward, toward the very core, um, I think that would go a long way to ameliorating my own personal concerns about the implications for my neighbors specifically in those red areas. Um, also, generally speaking, um, while I think this is the framework that we are going with, and I, um, I, I support, um, the effort for sure, I continue to, um, be very curious about a maximum cap model, and, um, whether that might be more effective for our city. I do believe that it would be more effective in, um, balancing out some of the impacts across the community, while also lowering the total number of STRs overall. Um, so I, I, I mean, I, I, that ship may have sailed. I know I said this last time we had this conversation, and, and, look, I, I will be frank, I am not going to vote no on this ordinance. I want this ordinance in place. But I, I really do believe that that could be very effective for our community, putting a max cap in place, no transferability, um, you know, we could even, I think, someone said, I don't, I don't remember which of my colleagues was, existing permitted, um, STRs could, you know, either count as sort of that, as sort, as part of that max or not, but then be phased out upon transfer. I mean, I think there's lots of good ways to do this, um, that would actually have the effect of, um, better limiting, um, these types of arrangements in our community. So I would, I would really ask that, um, to the extent it's feasible, that we consider a cap arrangement. Um, okay, so there's that. The second is, um, increasing fines. Yes, that's all I have written on that, I think is enough said. Um, no ADUs. I, I also agree with that. Um, and then I want to just talk briefly about the coastal zone. Um, and I started my comments with that, and I, I, um, so for the audience members, currently I'm the Chair of the California Coastal Commission, and we see short-term rental amendments to local LCPs all the time. Um, and I cannot tell you how profoundly the shift has been on that commission in the last four years since I've been a member, in terms of how we understand STRs and their role in the coastal zone. Um, this is an, a, a very, very important moment for us to be moving forward, to set some rules, to set the rules of the road around short-term rentals in the coastal zone. Um, uh, respect, I fully respect that our staff has been engaging with Coastal Commission staff. I can say from my perspective, um, I think we could go a lot further than we do here in the coastal zone and get through the commission. I would, um, and, and again, I'm speaking, um, only for myself, so I cannot speak for the whole commission, but I would urge you to look at the Marin County STR amendment that just went through in April, where they set a maximum number of hosted short-term rentals in their coastal communities. In all but two of their coastal communities, um, there were either no short-term rentals allowed, or they lowered the number of allowable short-term rentals. Um, you'll see in that staff report that Marin County had a very long, very long public engagement process, and that was hugely important to commission staff, that this represented. Um, while it was a very complex, and, and the staff report notes, and Marin County official notes, as we see here, it's complex. There are different sides to this issue, but the public engagement was a really important piece to the commission. I think we have that. This has been a long conversation. Um, and also that it's, it's about balancing. Um, I think that we, the data shows that, um, access is not improved by wildly expensive short-term rentals in the coastal zone. Um, and so I, I, I think, um, that's what we've seen across the state of California, that's what we have seen here. Um, and I would encourage us to, to really, um, put forth what it is we want to see in the coastal zone, not what we think will make it through the commission. Um, the commission is aware that housing is an incredible priority for the state of California, it's a priority for the legislature, um, and we want to be a partner in establishing housing policies that are going to serve local communities. We don't want to be, um, the reason that local communities can't put in place rules that serve them best. So, um, with that, I, I will remain, um, I, I would love to engage and to be part of that process however, however I can, but, um, just want to put that out there. And then lastly, well, not lastly, I'm going to go through these questions. Um, continue to treat STRs as hotels. Um, yes, I, I totally agree with that in general, um, though I would be open, I guess, in home share contexts for potentially an easier process, but I, that to me is going to depend on a lot of things, and, um, it has to be a very restrictive ordinance for me to be open to changing the way that is done. So, I guess I, I put that out there to say I'm not totally opposed to changing it, but I, there's a lot of unknowns for me to make a definitive answer on that right now. Um, remove the full-unit STRs, yes, absolutely, unequivocally. Um, and then on the home share piece, you know, I'm, I'm a bit of two minds in some ways. I think when Councilmember Snudden said, let's, let's ban them all together, I was saying, yes, absolutely, um, but I, I maybe now have been swayed by Councilmember Santa Maria, and I think where I will end up is that home sharing with the host onsite, um, where the host is the primary resident, is a good balance. And, you know, if we're talking about our own sort of personal anecdotal experience, I remember so, so many, um, times in my twenties where I was using Airbnb back when it was a home share, and, um, just the richness of those experiences. And if we could return to that, what a great calling card for Santa Barbara as well, for visitors to, um, be able to build relationships with, um, those folks who are, who are part of our community. So, um, I think where I am is, um, hosted home share would be acceptable to me, but even with hosted home share, I would like to see a cap, a max cap, across the entire community. I think, um, that's kind of the best of all worlds. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All righty then. So, this goes back, obviously, a long ways, and the city is, is kind of, was kind of the real criminal in this years and years ago, and we, we, we started to tacitly accept this, collect TOT, made it very, very, very confusing. And we got away from a very, a relatively straightforward zoning process, it still exists, hasn't really been altered, to this confusing time we have today, and, and we actually helped spawn some of the management companies that exist today, and, and some of them are high-performing, very, very good, on, on the mesa, like a lot of you folks. Uh, we've got both student housing, and we've got, um, STRs. And the STRs are beautifully maintained properties, however, they are transient, and they are, they're, and it isn't about, what I want to get away from is the qualitative way of doing this and go to the quantitative. We've got to make this, and what, the thing I want to emphasize to staff is, we've got to simplify everything as much as humanly possible. We have to make it understandable. There's always going to be skull flaws, but right now, nobody knows who's wearing a white and a black hat in this situation. Oh, well, I've got a license. Oh, I've been paying my TOT, but you're not zoned for it. Well, what are the rules? And, and we have been poor at defining the rules for a number of decades now. We got to get beyond that. I think you guys are in a pretty good direction right now. Um, I think in terms of the hotel designation or the, or the, the conversion to a commercial property for residential, I think that, I think complication is really the, uh, the enemy of compliance, and I've seen that time and time again. It's a really arcane process to convert your property over, and it's that way in perpetuity. So it doesn't address if and when this property sells, and wants to revert back, and what does that take? So I'd like to see that, uh, loosened up. And I know for years, talking to the small hoteliers, that really helped drive a lot of our ordinance along those lines. They've kind of backed off a lot of that, and I talk to these guys a lot, and so I don't think they feel that, that sense of, of, of direct threat or competition. But I agree with Councilmember Harmon, we need to basically kind of shrink the entire process down. But one thing about, in the coastal zone, as we know, we were, we were slapped on a hand for, for trying to enforce without a quote-unquote coastal development permit, and of course, the logic was at the time from the Coastal Commission, prior to Ms. Harmon's involvement, by the way, I'll give you a break on that. It was about, well, we're, we're going to destroy low-cost visitor-serving services by doing that, and they never made that finding. But somehow it stands, and we do have to do our local coastal development permit and get through the process. But I agree with what Ms. Harmon said, is that we need to design this to what we think is right for Santa Barbara. Other communities in Santa Barbara aren't the same animal, I'm sorry, we're just not. And so we've got to make it to what we want to do. I think personally, and simplistically, that, you know, where there are hotels permitted, especially in the coastal zone, people are used to transient occupancy uses, and to have those allowed down there makes sense to me if we're going to have them at all. Okay? Um, now, when it comes to the other zones that allow hotels and residential mixed, it's more complicated, but are we going to rezone those other areas so they can no longer be zoned for hotels? I don't think that's fair to the people that bought property with the expectation they'd be able to develop it someday. So I don't think that's as simple as it seems. Um, I think whatever we do, we don't want to make it so complex that it involves a lot of code enforcement, because we have a hard time getting our code enforcement teams for a lot of things, for all those outdoor cooking facilities and all the things we talk about all the time. And let's face it, a lot of zoning code is in fact enforced by complaint, and we do not want to keep perpetually putting residents in the position of playing cop. You know, we need to make this clear, we need to make this simple, and we need to make it as clean as humanly possible. When the STR thing happened years ago, and we first started collecting TOT, they, there were some in town, there've always been some, but then when Airbnb started up and they kind of blew the thing out of the water by promoting it, I had a knock on my door saying, what are you doing with your house when you go on vacation? Well, it can make money for you, and that's, that's how we got to where we are today, was explosion of this kind of thing. So, we've got to somehow do it, but we have to get it, we have to get away from the anecdotal stories and things we're doing. We've got to make it clean, we've got to make it clear. Um, I think, I think the homestay thing is going to be really hard to enforce. I think the hosted homestay thing makes sense, but I don't know how exactly you enforce that outside of the complaint thing. You can try to license them, you can try to follow them. Clearly, the use of social platforms to advertise these things is the way that we are currently enforcing, and I guess that's the way we'll go on in the future. Uh, but once again, make it as simple and make it as clear as, as, as possible. Um, so, I think when people buy a home in a single-family neighborhood particularly, they have an expectation of the quiet enjoyment, in the same conditions they bought that hun- house under going forward. So to allow STRs to exist in those areas is not exactly what they signed up for, and particularly not building an ADU. That's just not what the purpose was, they're not allowed, and we're not, I don't think it's right to even think about allowing those to be used for STRs. We are trying to increase, obviously, the, the housing stock whatever way we can, so, um, I think that, um, we need it to be, like I said, very, very simple, as black and white as possible, and whatever it takes, and I, and I do believe that the conversion should be less onerous, and I think it should allow for the conversion back if in fact that property sells and somebody wants to use it once again as a residential property, and that shouldn't be, that shouldn't be the, the pain that it is today. Um, so with that, um, I think that we have, now, Ms. McAdoo, do we have a motion on this? Do we have staff over there running like, uh, you know, like crazy trying to figure out?
I think we, we will, yes, I think we can compile, uh, the commentary that we received today. I think there was consent, you know, consensus on some items, and I think that, I mean, provides us enough direction. If the council feels comfortable, um, we can come, you know, obviously, anyone can come back and check the, check the file or check the video to confirm that, but, um, I think staff.
So, Ms. Dicey, Ms. Brightle, you feel confident you have, basically, because I, I think it was, as clear as the subject gets.
Yeah, but I think there was general, there was consensus on some points, and, you know...
Everybody good with that?
Okay.
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a very quick question for our city attorney. Um, we've heard a few folks mention an outright ban on the short-term rentals, and as Mayor Rouse said, you know, trying to keep this as black and white as possible. Is that even doable in this city for us to just outright ban them?
Uh, Councilmember Santa Maria, they're, they are already banned, um, except for in those limited areas where hotels are allowed in the zoning. The problem with the coastal zone is that because of the cracky decision that we've been speaking about, we are unable to enforce that except in the case of a nuisance complaint.
I see, but that's just for the coastal zone, correct?
Right, but inland, they are not allowed, except for on the zoning map where hotels are allowed. So they are already banned.
And that was going back to my historical reference, how we made this confusing, because in fact...
Right.
Then you look at our code, they're not allowed. So where's the sweet spot in this? And what do we do? And that's, uh, and then a lot of communities are wrestling some very, very thing right now. Ms. Snudden, you have a comment?
I think, I guess it's a follow-up question to that. So, they're banned everywhere except for these places where they're allowed. Do we have to allow them there?
That would be a, a bigger change to the zoning ordinance, and maybe Ms. Dicey can, can, can weigh in on that, but I don't think we have to allow them there. However, we have already permitted an operating ones, so it would be very difficult to take that permit away without allowing an amortization type period.
So we could, it, just, just legally asking if the, the ones who are already existing and permitting could be allowed by attrition, but then any new ones, not, no new ones? Because I, I, you know, I'm going to say, Councilmember Harmon has mentioned many times, and it strikes me every time, about how downtown is a neighborhood, there are families, it is, um, and so if there already are hotels, there already are hotels, so why squeeze out families even more? So, that also doesn't seem, they don't, it seems to me they shouldn't be anywhere, but...
I mean, we, Councilmember Snudden, we could change the definition of hotel to limit and exclude the STR, but then again, we would have that problem of the existing ones, and it would be more of a major kind of zoning, zoning map change. Also, there's, uh, I don't think staff mentioned the general plan, but, um, whether that would be consistent with the general plan?
So, I would just, because there has been a desire to at least regulate the ones that are already in place, creating, I, I would just caution the council from going down the road of directing us to also go and change the zoning, or, you know, I think trying to get a, a enforcement ordinance in the coastal zone that we can, so we can manage those, um, because that's very different than going back and changing, changing the zoning code. And so I, I just want to keep this, I would, just because this has been a pending issue for so long, and being able to enforce and have noise violations, have an enforcement program that, you know, has the nuisance pieces and those things for other parts of the community, so I just want to make sure, like, we're not, you know, because that would take staff time away to go do all the zoning ordinance changes, and I, I think there's a desire to at least get the coastal zone addressed sooner rather than later.
Definitely, and, um, I agree with that. I would be concerned later it might be considered a taking or something, if we push this through this way, but then later want to say they're banned everywhere except...
Councilwoman, that's why we would need some kind of an amortization period for the ones that are already legal, they'd be legal, non-conforming, that kind of thing.
Well, well, in light of, I'll finish here, but in light of, um, Councilmember Harmon's comments, I, I mean, I would like to not just shrink it down to the smallest, I would like to shrink it and have it not, I would have it just be the ones that are permitted, already, um, amortized down, but... already, um, amortized down, but no new ones. And same with the coastal zone, if we're putting forward what we think is what we have to put versus, if it may be even smaller, um, I'd be in favor of it being as, as only what already exists, and maybe not even that. But, um, just to emphasize that after, um, Councilmember Harmon's comments.
Mr. Jordan.
Just to be clear, um, I don't have a problem with that. I was talking about shrinking down the red zone, because I see staff making an attempt to get me what I really want as soon as possible, and that is to get the, get this resolved in the coastal zone. And I will go down screaming and clawing if we burden staff with a year longer to match up zoning work that complicates it, and we have to, we have to continue to allow this, which is out of control. I, I think, I made this comment the other day at the ordinance committee last week, that, uh, we're spending all this time and a year and a half in resources on an adaptive reuse that might, uh, put forth 50 units in two years if it was lucky. Well, in, in the time we've spent on the adaptive reuse, there's probably been another 400 short-term vacation rentals in the last two years on the Mesa. So, um, I am sup, I, I am okay with not allowing them anywhere, anywhere in the inland, and just leaving the six alone, or the 10 alone, whatever those are, but I am not okay with doing anything that bogs down staff load or staff process.
Why don't, why don't we as a, we'll, we'll evaluate what that would take in terms of staff time, but I think the direction is we'll proceed as quickly as possible with the coastal zone regulations, and get that moving, and continue that work, and then sort of explore, like, what would the, what would it look like to do the work to ban it in the other locations?
Right. And just for the record, and the reason why I keep bringing up hotel zones and whatnot, because we keep talking about coastal zone, which on the map is contained between Castillo and the zoo, which is what my intention is, but that, this coastal zone is defined as broader than that. And that's why I want to stay in the hotel zones and not in the single-family residential zones.
Correct. And I think right now, we don't differentiate where they're allowed.
Correct.
And so that's, we want to get that work so that we can disallow them in the single-family zones, in the coastal zone, and then contain them to the hotel zones.
Plus, I do think that helps us simplify the whole definition. Mr. Busk, you came forward, did you have a comment you wanted to add?
Uh, yes, through the mayor, just to respond to that question, we did get direction previously from council to look at the areas where hotels are allowed, where conditional use permits might be an appropriate permitting mechanism for them. So to me, this makes sense to explore as part of that, which would come after the more specific STR ordinance.
Thank you. Alrighty, I think, uh, to beat, to beat, beat this, beat this horse one more time? Alright, very good. We'll be back. Thank you, and, uh, and Ms. Brightle, thank you for your report, that was very good. Well, um, do, we need a break?
Uh, I think we could take a break while the staff changes over.
Okay, uh, let's get back here as soon as, right after five o'clock we can, please.
Okay, we are gonna reconvene and we'll go to the next item. Madam Clerk, would you please read it into the record?
Item 10, Paseo Nuevo redevelopment project update resolution. Reclamation that Council A approve the amendment to the project description contained in the project agreement dated March 14, 2024 between the City of Santa Barbara and Paseo Propco LLC and direct the city administrator and city attorney to negotiate a disposition and development agreement for redevelopment of the Paseo Nuevo Shopping Center consistent with the terms outlined in the council agenda report, including the change in configuration of the project and the city's financial contribution. And B, adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the city council of the City of Santa Barbara supplementing resolution number 24016 declaring designated parcels of city-owned property to be exempt, surplus land pursuant to sub-paragraph J of paragraph 1 of subdivision F of California Government Code Section 54221 Paseo Nuevo by the addition of city-owned property commonly referred to as parking lot 2.
Thank you. Ms. Harris, are you...
I'm actually, I'm doing the presentation, Mayor. Thank you. So, good evening, or I guess it is evening now, Mayor and Council. Happy to be here this afternoon evening to present the latest update for the Paseo Nuevo redevelopment. And I want to thank first, we have a large project team that has been working diligently on this effort over the last year from the city attorney's office, community development, our consultants, and also from one of the representatives from AB, their attorney Graham Lyons is here to help answer questions. So, I wanted to, we'll go to the first slide. What we have, a number of things that we want to do today, but I wanted to just take a step back and provide a little bit of context for what we're doing today. And this is, so the last time that the council has seen this project was in March of 2024. And as I mentioned, we have been working over the last year to really start to dive into the financial viability of this project and what will work from AB's perspective. And I will explain who AB is, their history, their background, how we got here. But what they have needed to do is get their internal approvals for a project concept and sort of the general framework for those deal points before it became public. And so where we are now is we are now kind of doing the public reveal of the revised project and getting direction from council to continue the negotiations and to move forward with a number of the exploratory things that need to happen. There's a lot of pieces, a lot of details that still need to be worked out. There's a lot of parties that still need to be negotiated with and agreements that need to be finalized. And then this would come back to the council for final approval of the disposition and development agreement. So I just want to be clear right today that the council is just giving us direction to continue those negotiations based on the project framework that we are providing today. And then I'll talk a little bit about the Surplus Lands Act exemption because that is the resolution that we are asking the council to adopt. So we'll talk a little bit about the history of the project, timeline. We'll go through the updated renderings that AB and the team has prepared, talk about the Surplus Lands Act, the economics, and then go through some of the next steps. So, go to the next slide. So, for those, you know, who are familiar, the Paseo Nuevo Mall was originally built in 1989, started in 1989, and is really a key anchor for the city-centered district of State Street. And what we are looking to do is really to convert some of our vacant and functionally obsolete retail buildings and bring multifamily housing into the downtown core. And so, next slide, just background. So, this property was originally developed in partnership when we used to have a city redevelopment agency, and we have 75-year ground leases, again, that originated in 1989 with the construction of the mall. And when the redevelopment agency was dissolved in 2011, those leases transferred to the city. So now the city owns that property versus the redevelopment agency. And because of that, now that the city owns those, the charter restrictions on 50-year leases now apply. And so at this point, those leases only have 40 years left and they cannot be extended, which creates a lot of burden and encumbrance on a property that most developers would not be willing to enter into to be able to amortize their development costs over time. Even though we own the land under the mall, the ground lease assigns the ownership rights for all of the buildings on top of that land. And there is also the parking lots, Lot 2, Lot 1, and Lot 10, that are affiliated with the Paseo Nuevo Mall and the Nordstrom Building. And those are all controlled through a reciprocal easement agreement that the city is a party to, AB is a party to, and then the owners of the Nordstrom Building are a party to. And that's a key piece of this deal. So, wanted to explain the ownership structure of the actual building and the mall, most of the mall shops. So these are owned and controlled by a subsidiary of Alliance Bernstein. And Alliance Bernstein is not a developer. They are an investment management firm. They, as you can see, manage assets, manage funds, and do investments. However, they have become the accidental owners of this property, which I'll explain in more details. And they have assembled a development team to help them basically redevelop this distressed asset that they unintentionally acquired. Next slide. So, they, as I mentioned, AB became the mall's unintentional owner. They made a loan from their investment funds to the former owner of the mall. And that borrower defaulted. And so AB then took ownership of the buildings as a result of that default. And so instead of trying to sell the mall as is, which would have probably not earned them any money on their original investment, given the encumbrances and restrictions on the property, they chose to work with the city and to work on a community outcome and a community project that hopefully benefits all of our stakeholders that are involved in this process. So we, so the last bullet, I think, is important. So the city owns the land, AB owns Macy's and the inline shop improvements, and Shop Off is the organization, the group that owns the Nordstrom improvements. And again, all three of our, these parties are bound by the reciprocal easement agreement, and we all must work together to find a mutual way to redevelop the property. So here's the current ground lease interests. You can see the AB parcels in red. You can see parking lot 1, 2, and 10 are controlled by the reciprocal easement. Those were all built specifically to serve the mall property. Nordstrom is a separate ground lease. Again, the city owns the land under that building, but the ground lease there and the building are owned by Shop Off. So again, as we mentioned, there's only 40 years left on the remaining, the ground leases, and really not sufficient time to amortize the investment that would be required to redevelop the site, and we cannot extend those leases per the city's charter. So just a little bit of kind of where we've been to date. In 2022, after the default of the prior owner, AB approached the city to begin these conversations, and staff was authorized in September of '23 to begin negotiating a project agreement, which eventually came to council initially in March of 2024, which includes the 500, that was the original 500-unit development that was proposed. Simultaneously, the California Department of Housing and Community Development has approved exempting the mall, the Macy's Building, and the Nordstrom Building from the State Surplus Lands Act. And just, sir, I'll talk a little bit about the Surplus Lands Act here. The Surplus Lands Act governs how public agencies must dispose of property. And in the last number of years, the state has made changes to that legislation and those laws to encourage more affordable housing development. So where things have, you know, now, usually when a city decides to sell a piece of property, you have to go to affordable housing developers first, then public agencies. There's a whole listing of priority order. Because of the encumbrances on these properties and because of the lease arrangements, that was the genesis for creating that exemption for the original parcels under the Surplus Land Act. So, as I mentioned, that original exemption was confirmed in March of '24 in the original project description, and we have now been working for the past year to identify a financially viable project. And so we are here this evening to talk about the new project. So what is the revised project? We have, you'll see, the former Macy's Building at the corner of State and Ortega and Chapala. There has been proposed to be demolished, to be replaced by 233 market-rate housing units. There would be a new anchor specialty retailer or grocer at the corner of State and Ortega Street. The, all of the retail in the center would be redeveloped, the public spaces refreshed. And then one of the big pieces is Lot 2, which is further up Chapala Street there, would be, portions of it would be repurposed to build 80 income-restricted, low-income units on that site. And then parking would be provided through the existing Lot 1, the remaining spaces on Lot 2 and Lot 10 for the retail and the housing uses. Next slide. So here's just a different view looking down Chapala Street towards the Macy's Building. You can also see where the Nordstrom's Building, former Nordstrom's Building sits, just as a different rendering. Next slide. And then here you can see how the retail, the retail that would be redeveloped, basically repositioned in the yellow highlights, and then you can see kind of the aerial view of the Macy's housing as well as the housing on Lot 2. Next slide. This, we like to call the Pinterest dreamboard, which is kind of the, what could this look like from a public space perspective on the paseo that would run from State Street through to Chapala? And so just really starting to re-envision kind of what those public spaces look like. Similarly, here's some sort of vision pictures of what the private spaces, private open spaces inside the new Macy's development could look like, including a pool, gardens, et cetera. Here is a slide that shows the view from Chapala and Ortega. I will highlight that on the far right of the slide is the proposed housing development on the former Volkswagen dealership site that is not yet constructed, that parcel is vacant. And that is, just to show for scale, what had been approved there previously, just so you could have it as a reference point. And then here would be the view from State and Ortega with the market or specialty retail store. Again, the housing units stepped back a little bit from the frontage on State Street. And then here is a view of that paseo between State and Chapala, and then again, views of the public spaces inside the mall. Here again is just a visualization of what the affordable units would look like at Chapala. And I want to be clear, this is not the sort of final location of these affordable units, and I think that's a key piece. You know, this, this is, we're just sort of, the first time we're publicly vetting this. I know AB and the team met with the housing authority for the first time last week to start the conversation. There's still a lot of work that needs to be done in terms of feasibility. Obviously, there's some other commercial spaces that are attached to the Lot 2 parking garage. So identifying where the units would go, how that would look, feasibility, that's all sort of next steps in this process. And again, as I said, this is sort of a jumping off point for those additional negotiations and conversations. And here's just some side views from Ortega Street and elevations from the paseo. And then this is just a cross-section of how the units would be stacked within the housing development on the Macy's site, and along with the retail, similarly here. And then here is the parking program, and we'll, I'll go through this a little bit in more detail because we have actually a summary slide that talks more about the parking, so we'll go next. So here we go. So here we have the development program detail. You'll see the existing, obviously no housing on site. There's about 240,000 square feet of retail that does not include the Nordstrom's Building. There are the art museum and theater, which were community uses. Currently, there are 572 parking spaces in Lot 1. The current building height is around 66 feet, and there are 569 parking spaces in Lot 2. In March of '24, the original plan was for 450 to 475 market-rate units, 25 to 50 affordable units that were on-site or off-site, and then little less than 80,000 square feet of retail. No preservation of the art museum or the theater because there would have been a complete demolition of the site. And then there would have actually been an increase in spaces in Lot 1, and again, an allocation of residential parking of a 1.1 per residential unit, building height of 75 feet, and the density going up to 81 units per acre. Again, you know, Lot 2 was not necessarily in play in that project. So where we are now, we are at a project where we have 233 market-rate units. We have 80 affordable units on Lot 2, where with those 233, only 12 to 23 affordable units are required. And so then the retail, food and beverage would actually increase from the March proposal back up to 175,000 square feet. The art museum and theater would be maintained. We'd still increase parking spaces in Lot 1 to accommodate the new market space, and then one residential parking space per residential unit, 75 building feet height, and then 38 dwelling units per acre. And then the parking lot in Lot 2 estimated would have, see a reduction down to about 383 parking spaces. Next slide. So when AB went back to actually look at the financial viability of that original 500-unit project, it would have required demolishing the entire mall and rebuilding an entirely new foundation. And that foundation cost alone made it cost prohibitive to build. And so that project came off the table. And this, this reduced development brings the project closer to financial viability, I can talk. It does utilize the existing parking. It only demolishes the most functionally obsolete building, which is the Macy's Building, and then retains those inline shops in Paseo Nuevo, creates new public spaces, and really, I think, achieves some of the goals that we've been working on for State Street, which is, you know, revitalizing the property, bringing new retailers in, and including a lot more housing in downtown. So next slide. Again, the affordable housing program clearly still under development and still in a lot of conversation needed here. The goal is to create a standalone affordable housing project. Because of the contiguous nature of this parcel to the Paseo Nuevo site, it can be considered part of the project, and it would accommodate up to 80 units. They have to be built concurrently. So in order to occupy the market-rate units, the affordable units would have to be built and occupied at the same exact time. And so 12 to 25 of these units would be used to satisfy the current affordable housing requirements, and they would like to, AB would like to bank those remaining affordable units if they built future market-rate housing on that site. If the, if they built out all the, you know, 475 units approximately, and we do sort of proportional math here, they would be required to have about 50 affordable units for those 500 units. And so that would really result in, you know, still 30 extra additional affordable units above and beyond what they are required to provide, even if they bank those units. So just wanted to clarify that. I know there was some confusion, but again, immediately they will have at least, you know, about 50 to 60 extra units on that site above and beyond their affordable requirement. The other important piece of this is keeping those affordable units in a building to themselves, which would allow financing through the tax credit financing program. There are some specific requirements with that. Obviously, a lot of details still to be worked out around this, but we, the tenant incomes would be limited to 80% of the area median income. So here's just a quick look at the potential retail program. Again, the specialty grocer or retailer for 17,000, 17,000 square feet on the corner of State and Ortega, a large, large fitness or wellness tenant on the backside, and again, repositioning the retail sites and restaurants. And then here's a more detailed look at the parking. Again, existing in Lot 1 is 572 spots, Lot 2 has 569 spots, and they would then increase the number of parking spaces in Lot 1 to 600, which 47 of those would be devoted to the retail market, and then there would be an additional 320 spaces left. Lot 2 would go down to 383 spaces, which would still provide a significant amount of parking. And Lot 10 spaces, there'd still be 546 there, which significantly, those all are supposed to support the retail as well. So just talk a little bit about the surplus land exemption. So Lot 2, again, in order for this to proceed and for us to build, for basically for AB to be the developer, to allow the development of those 80 affordable units on Lot 2, we would need to declare, the council needs to declare this as exempt from the Surplus Land Act requirements. So we're just amending the resolution to include Lot 2 in there. We'd already included Lot 1 and the overall mall property, so this would just extend that. The California Department of Housing and Community Development has already preliminary approved that proposed exemption, and so tonight there's a resolution before the council to do that. So most importantly, I think, is to talk a little bit about the financials of the project. And so really have done some, some core work. AB has been very forthcoming in sharing their pro forma for the project that we have comprehensively reviewed. Our teammates, Dina Belzer and Pat Flynn from the team at Strategic Economics, has worked diligently on that. We also had Peter Lewis do sort of a local fact check on those numbers as well, just given his experience, local experience developing housing units. And so really looking at operating expenses, rent levels, construction costs, and rate of return, and these all seem comparable with market assumptions for Santa Barbara. So, as we mentioned previously, neither the city nor AB can really realize any redevelopment or future potential on these sites without removing the restrictions through the ground lease and the reciprocal easement agreement. And this is why I think AB decided to go forward and develop it themselves, because they realized that they couldn't sell it and actually make back the initial loan investment that they had, they had put into, that's my assumption, I don't know that for sure, but if I was a guessing woman. And so really, the restrictions on these parcels means that the city has no land value until we get a deal with AB to figure out how to move forward and the restrictions are removed. And I think that's really important because that, that really forces us into a position where we must work with AB to come up with a proposal. So we do have some contributions that would be provided in order to assist in getting this deal done. There, we would basically, upon, and it would be much later in the process, once, you know, the building permits were issued and construction was actually beginning, we would transfer, transfer the land under the Paseo Nuevo Mall that is leased to AB. We would transfer that to them. The portion of the Lot 2 land that would be developed for affordable housing, we would retain the balance of that parking structure. The Nordstrom portion of the city-owned land is still in conversation. We've been having negotiations with Shop Off, and we're including sort of the value of that parcel. And I know that Nordstrom's currently has a proposal in for housing, but that again needs to be negotiated as part of the changes to the reciprocal easement agreement. The, AB has requested an annual contribution that would be equal to the city's share of property tax revenue generated by the project for 20 years. So if you understand how property tax in our county works, we, we, we So if you understand how property tax in our county works, we collect about 11 to 12 cents on every dollar of property tax. The rest goes to schools, the county. So this would be approximately $300,000 a year is the city's share of the property tax. And then again, that banking of those affordable units for any future development that they wanted to have on the site. And so once you look at kind of the removal of all of those encumbrances, the potential value of the land contributions, once all of those encumbrances are removed, could be somewhere between $32 to $39 million. And so what we have been working with, with our financial consultants and others to look at is kind of what is a typical market rate of return on development deals, housing deals? Developers typically target an 8% return sort of in our region. And so what this shows is, you know, there's scenario one where they, where we would, AB would try to recoup, you know, their entire full investment, initial investment, and they are at a rate of return somewhere about 4.27 to 4.47%. And then the sort of best-case scenario would be, the highest rate of return estimate would be about 6.83% if it excluded some of that initial investment that they made. So in that range is where their target rate of return, which is still well below the typical market return, even with the city's contributions of land. These numbers do include both sales and property tax revenues. City staff is not recommending to include sales tax in the deal at this point, and so we would just, we are recommending the property tax contribution.
Ms. Magidoodis?
Yes.
Excuse me. So we don't have the scenario up there that says just doing sales tax only?
Just property tax only. No, it's a very small, it's a very small differential in those percentages.
Okay, that's, I mean, that was just typographically. Thank you.
And then, so this is just, again, what the proposed city contributions are, and again, what we get for that, which is we get a revitalized retail center. We get probably close to 600 new residents living in downtown. We do get that 80 units of affordable housing at the same time the market rate units are built, the new retail uses, really the increased, hopefully ancillary, sales tax and property tax improvements for surrounding businesses and properties. And I think this is probably close to my last slide. Again, this is a sort of a very unique project for any cities, particularly for Santa Barbara. And, you know, we are in this kind of unintentional outcome of the defaulted former property owner and AB, who is not a typical developer, and trying to figure out how to make something work on this project with all of these encumbrances. I think AB has shown a commitment to understanding the community's vision for the site, working with architects who have understood and sort of trying to figure out how to make this work from a community perspective, but also from a market perspective. And so really trying to balance a number of interests as we bring this project forward. And so I think that those are the sort of key summary, and I'll talk a little bit about next steps. Again, we will continue to work with AB and many other stakeholders as we move forward to develop the final disposition and development agreement. This is sort of the rough outline, so today's a day for the council to provide us feedback on the various elements of the project. There would be a public hearing at council for approval of that final DDA, and I think if there are major changes or things we need to, we can do checkpoints with the council in between here and the anticipated or desired approval date at the end of 2025. So I think there's an opportunity if we, if there's a sort of fatal flaw that we all realize, we can come back, obviously. We hope that that's not the case. And then the goal would be to move forward with the land use entitlement application and reviews, again, through this, the later fall and through spring. So that is the next steps. And then again, the recommended actions are to actually approve that amendment to the project description based on what is here today to give us direction to continue the negotiations, and then to adopt the resolution exempting the Lot 2 from the Surplus Land Act. And so with that, I'm happy to, and the team, I think, will be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I just have a couple of quick ones to start out with. First of all, with Lot 2, is it a potential proposal to deed over part of Lot 2 or all of Lot 2?
Part of Lot 2.
And we'd have to go with the SLA to do that?
That is what is included here. So that we would basically, the portion of Lot 2 that's needed for the project is what is being declared exempt.
So we would basically do the split Lot 2 as far as?
There'd have to be a lot.
Mr. Henske.
Well, you know, honorable mayor members of the council, how we actually accomplish the land transfer is yet to be determined. There may be, it may be transfer all of it and reserve back, then an ability by the city to have a permanent easement for the parking. It may be to do a split and split off part of it. We don't know exactly yet. That is part of the economic analysis that we have to do in the future. In order to do either one of those, we have to adopt the resolution declaring the entire Lot 2 surplus.
Okay, thank you. And then the last question is, what triggers the fee transfer? What is the triggering point?
I think, again, that's, we still need to look at that. My guess is it would probably be building permit issuance, because at that point, you know, they will probably want to assume, you know, or we will want them to assume the liability of what's happening on the site.
So that we know what we are going to get, what we want.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there, do you have a projected number for that property tax contribution over 20 years?
It's about $300,000 a year, but in net present value, net present value, it's $300,000.
So is that 6 million or 60 million?
That's the annual. So what's the total? Okay, we don't, we don't know the total net present value of that right now.
So where would we get that money? Would we be counting on increased sales tax and that kind of thing being generated?
It would just be basically a rebate of the property tax that they pay.
But we'd pay it.
Correct.
Yeah, but, so, I'm still fresh from today's financial discussions. I'm just saying, let's just say it's $300,000 or $500,000 a year. Where would that, how are we counting on that being a negative contribution from our standpoint versus are we going to earn more money off the shopping center in terms of sales tax?
I think there is the anticipation that we would likely earn more money off the shopping center. I think the other piece is we currently pay about $150,000 a year for maintenance and trash collection under the reciprocal easement agreement, which would be extinguished, so we would no longer pay that $150,000 a year.
Great. And just so you'll answer this, one of you will answer this question publicly, because I'm still getting questions on this, a couple of them. Macy's was looked at being reused, right? It's too big for retail, and if you wanted to put residential on there because of the type of construction, it would have to be knocked down anyhow. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
That's our understanding.
Okay. Still getting emails on that saying reuse Macy's. And then also, this is going to be a bonus, as they're pursuing, it's going to be a bonus density.
Correct. This would be a project under state.
And their concession that they're entitled to name and collect is the height, correct? So when people say, oh, you're a charter city and you can only go to 60 feet, that is not true in this particular situation, right?
And that's under state law.
Okay. And then, do we have a current method for banking excess low-income housing?
We don't. It would be recorded as part of the development agreement, so that would be where we would document and memorialize that.
And then, it still has to go through an HLC process, right? No matter what?
Yes, that's correct.
And it'd be in the normal HLC process?
Mayor and council members, yes, that's correct. We would identify in the disposition and development agreement the process for entitlement moving forward.
Does it end up in any one of those maximum meeting conundrum laws that kind of temper both sides' power?
Councilmember Jordan, yes, there is the possibility in the development agreement to limit the number of meetings for this project.
But that would be a negotiation point, right?
Councilmember Jordan, yes.
So we don't want something bland. They don't want to pay for huge articulation and fenestration and whatever else, somewhere in the middle. So we would be able to negotiate that upfront as to maybe not necessarily a number of meetings, but some method of process that would get us to something that looks like Santa Barbara and not like something we had to take from somewhere else.
Councilmember Jordan, yes, that's correct. The staff would continue to negotiate with AB and the development team and need to identify what that looks like. We're not quite ready to answer whether that would be a limited number of meetings or otherwise, but we would be doing that in the next process.
And I think we'd also need to ensure that we don't conflict with state law, which does have now requirements on the maximum number of public hearings a housing project can go through.
Okay. There's a tendency for big projects like this to go bland pretty quickly, though. I mean, so that'd be my hope that we could negotiate, so sneak that in. On, you know, I've been around long enough to remember the hole at the bottom of State Street, the hole at the Canary Hotel. That's predating you. But how do we ensure they don't get a demo permit, start demo, then financially bail and leave us with a hole in the ground for 10 years? Do we performance bond it?
I think there's a couple ways, and the development agreement, Dan can confirm this, but, you know, if that happens, there could be a way where we claw back the land, and I think that could be part of the negotiations.
Okay. And then...
Good answer.
Okay.
Last dumb question. So this is just somebody else's dumb question to me, so I'm not going to take ownership of it. So let's say we really don't like the deal, and AB doesn't want to keep the property. So they sell the property on, they need to get it out, this is not what they do, right? So they just, they need to, they need to see some closure. One closure is just the pathway that's being presented. The other closure is they just say, okay, whatever, we're going to sell it on pennies on the dollar to get out, get out from under this, clear our balance sheet, you know, take a loss, and have their investors cover that, and sell it to somebody. And so they sell it for a really low amount of money, and doesn't that potentially put us in a position where then the new owner has such a low basis that they would be in a better position to make a better deal with us than we're in now?
Maybe, but there's still...
Really? It's okay, but I'm really looking hard at the two ladies over there because they have experience in this area, too. So I'm just wondering what that...
The 40-year ground lease is the big, that Dina can answer.
There's a 40-year ground lease as part of the issue, but also if you remember that in scenario 2, where we took out all of their basis, so basically they got the land for free, given the cost to construct the project, that the rate of return is still so low that it's unlikely that a developer who's looking to make a market rate return on this project, when they have other options to invest their money, would choose to do this project.
And being that the elephant on that property is the large Macy's building and the parking lot, it's that even in my scenario of what if, somebody would still have to develop that part of the property, right? They'd have to knock down the biggest building on the block?
Correct, yes.
And redevelop it, and so that, so maybe in a perfect world, if it was a bunch of little buildings down there, maybe that might work out because somebody's basis gets to so low and they can just nibble away at it.
If you could reuse the building.
But somebody's got to have the math to be able to work on the big part of that, the lower end of that parcel, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And build a new building over an existing parking lot.
Yep.
Right? So that's really, the constructability of a new building is a big issue.
Okay. Last question. I found one more. So I know, you know, we've probably all heard from the Shop-Off people, and they feel they're kind of being talked to secondarily after all this talk, even though they are one-third of a signatory on the reciprocal agreement. How do we, as part of our dealings with AB and our agreement, make sure that Shop-Off is getting their fair share to do something with that dead corner also?
So Shop-Off is in a little different scenario. They are, in fact, a developer. They came in and bought that property. So they knew the market conditions. They bought that Nordstrom's building. So it's a little different scenario than AB, who inherited and basically acquired and foreclosed property based on a loan that they had made. And so we have been, I have been, had a number of conversations with Shop-Off. I know AB has been having a number of conversations with Shop-Off. We are trying to work through kind of what does, what does the value of the land under that parcel look like once the ground lease is extinguished? And so we will obviously continue those conversations. They obviously need to be, as we said, a signatory to releasing the reciprocal easement agreement. So, you know, we all have a vested interest in making sure that we have conversations with them and continue to have those discussions. I think where we were, we hadn't been able to come to an agreement before this point, but we needed to make the project public so that AB can now go talk to the housing authority and figure out what's feasible, go talk to other partners, go, so we needed to get the project out there so that we could do some of these other feasibility discussions, but obviously we'll continue to have those conversations with Shop-Off.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Freeman.
Thank you. A few questions. So I'm going to start at kind of the end. Let's say this, it's kind of where Councilmember Jordan was, doesn't go through, and AB decides to offload the lease, and it's not for a redevelopment project, it's to a mall operator, which would probably be more likely to take place. So what would, what type of other scenario if we don't come to some type of project with them today, would we be looking at for the next 40 years? Is it the mall kind of as it is and deteriorating, or what types of things would we see there?
I think that would be our assumption, is that some, I mean, they would put, sort of probably someone would come in who owns and operate, they might do some minimal improvements depending on what they paid for the site, but I can't imagine, as Dina had mentioned, no one's going to come in and build housing on the site if we don't continue the negotiations with AB on this project.
Okay. So I just want to make that because there's some that we could maybe get somebody else to come in and get a better deal, but that's probably more realistic when you're looking at it. Going back to the financials of approximately $300,000, just so I'm clear, we pay $150,000 now for trash and a few other things, so that comes off the books, increased sales tax, and then also the property itself would then get reassessed, so the property tax is higher, so they would pay that. We would get a higher property tax of our 11%, but then we would give that back to them.
That's correct.
So that's, so it's basically in some way, it's not going to add to our other discussions we're having in terms of our deficits. It's not like we're going to be deficit spending out of that.
Not necessarily. I mean, I think it just depends on, I mean, it's hard to estimate what other sales tax increases or property values or increases might happen in the surrounding area. I mean, those are speculative at this point.
But those are possibilities that we're not going to be $300,000. I mean, we're, it's actually about $150,000 we're talking about, so we might be able to make that up with the property taxes. And then, so another question on the affordable units, just so I understand, because the question has come up through some of the correspondents, that, you know, preferences by many in the community is to integrate affordables with the market rates. But if we did that and say we had affordables within the Macy's and then some of the market rates, specifically the market rates in the parking lot, if the market rates were in there, would it be eligible for the tax credit?
My understanding is no. It has to, if it's a deed-restricted property, it has to be standalone to qualify for tax credits.
And so that's the primary driving force of separating the two, is so that you could get the low-income housing tax credits to make the financing work for it. It's not a deliberate choice we're making to put the two and ignore that. Okay.
And I would also just say, you know, if they didn't use Lot 2 or build those 80 units, they could put 12 units, and we would get 12 units, and they could build them in their property, and that would be all we would get. So that's, just for comparison, so this is well exceeding what they are required to build in terms of affordable units.
And then how long are those affordable units restricted for? How many years?
Typically, it's 99 years.
Councilmember Freeman, our typical restricted jurisdiction is 90 years.
And as part of that, the, they would, with the land underneath those units would go to them, right? Or do we still?
Councilmember Freeman, as Mr. Henske was mentioning, we're not quite sure yet how the transfer will occur. Could be a long-term lease, could be a transfer of the underlying property, but something akin to that. It would need to be separated from the parking that would remain.
And then the other question, and this is getting way out there, but it's just something that, you got to ask these questions because this is something that is going to affect our city for next century, maybe, and beyond. 90 years from now, would those... 90 years from now, would those units then be privately owned and possibly, possibly no more restrictions on them? Or is that something you could work out at a later time?
It's hard to know. I mean, I think maybe, Dan could do that.
I, that's, I could only speculate. The answer is, we have the ability through the Development Disposition Agreement to lock down the affordability of those units for the longest possible term. We will need to transfer the property and fee and make it part of the development. That's because we have a charter that prohibits us from leasing property for more than 50 years. So we can't use some of the financing mechanisms or leasing mechanisms that you might use in other projects. But that being said, we have the ability to assure affordability covenants that continue. If you want to make it longer than the 90 we have now, we can probably do that, too.
I don't want to make this overly complicated.
Yeah, and the other thing is, how long do you want to tie the hands of future councils, who might want to change the use in 90 years to something that's a little bit different that meets the community needs 90 years from now?
And I will say, if, depending on how the structure of the deal works, if the housing authority becomes the partner, if they end up owning those units, you know, it's, I think it's unlikely, if they're still around in 90 years, that they'll just convert them to market rate units. So I think there's a lot of, a lot of pieces that we are still, you know, again, this is the first public vetting of these ideas, and now there's a lot more conversations and discussions that need to happen.
Thanks. This is helpful. The reason for these questions is to understand we're getting a lot more affordables than we would otherwise get for 90 years, which is a huge benefit on it. So one other, let me sure. So a few questions, but on one topic, on the bank units. And this relates to, one, financials, but two, trying to look at downtown housing, potentially gets into whatever happens with adaptive reuse on what we do and things. There's approximately, I think earlier, there's the unit stuff for this, and then the Nordstrom's would get in on those 80 units somehow for theirs. And then there's that bank of about 30. Would it be possible financially to, if you were to limit the scope of the area to, say, El Pueblo Viejo for other housing projects that might have a hard time financially building affordable units through adaptive reuse, let's say, that they could financially, make a financial contribution towards these, and those could go towards paying down the city's, the city's financial obligation, this $300,000 a year that we would be on? So we would actually, it would be another source so we could get more housing downtown, and it would be financially beneficial to the city? Is that something that could be explored during this whole process? I don't need an answer now whether it's possible.
Yeah, it could be explored. I think we would probably not want to tie it to the disposition and development agreement and have it be a separate program. It'd be like a transfer of development rights program, something similar along those lines. I think that is a separate policy conversation that the council should have, and it should not be tied to this project, per se, at this point.
Okay. And I think, yeah, I just wanted to raise that as a separate that we could discuss at a later time. And I think those are, that's all my questions for now.
Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. So just, they're not really related, the questions. I'll just spatter them out here. Can we confirm that we're not transferring any land today?
Correct. No land is transferring hands today with the council action.
Right.
Correct.
And you've spoken to it, but the 75-foot height, do we have any control over that?
No.
Thank you. And what's the status or the plan for the feasibility study for Lot 2? Like, is it going to be feasible to demo portions or build portions? And when does that come in?
So assuming we get direction today to move forward and we declare Lot 2 as part, you know, exempt from the Surplus Lands Act, that would be the trigger, that we could then go forth and start those analyses.
And that's also, I think you mentioned this, that's also when the conversations with the housing authority would start? So they wouldn't be coming in later, they'd be part of the feasibility?
I think we all want to get those conversations started as soon as possible.
Great. And then it sounds like we can ask or require that the affordable units be built concurrently. That can be built into the agreement?
Yes.
And then I'll ask this one, and I'm not sure if you can answer it. It's a lingering question for me. If they are the lender, why does the number of years left on the lease matter? If they're not trying to get a lender to be the lender, they are the lender?
Well, they're trying to recoup their initial loan they made on the property. So they have investors that gave them money to invest. I just, I'm just kind of, I don't know how their ownership structure works. I'm just, but it's like, you know, they have to make that investment back. I don't know, Pat, as you...
I would just add, Councilwoman Sneddon, that in addition to recouping the initial investment, additional funds will be needed to be invested to do the development. And that can't be really amortized at any competitive rate of return. So as the bank, they're lending to many things. This would not meet their investment hurdles.
And then what happens to them? We hear a lot about, and if you can't answer these things, I understand, too, but they're just lingering questions. What, I mean, if this project didn't go through, and then we hear about, well, it'll sit there as a black hole for 40 years or whatever it's going to be, what happens on their end? They would recoup nothing?
They would recoup whatever they're able to sell it for. And I think frankly, with all the encumbrances, that number would be very, very low.
I mean, they could also continue to operate it as a mall and just lease out the retail spaces and generate rent. I mean, that could also, that could also be how they, that's another option.
Yeah, assuming that it's a positive cash flow.
But we don't, we don't know. We have not seen those numbers.
I mean, I just, it seems to me it would not be in their interest to leave it as a black hole any more than it would be in our interest to continue to have the black hole. It's in nobody's interest to have that happen.
The Macy's would continue. I mean, that will not be released.
Yeah. So I just, for myself, I don't like that as like an overhanging threat that, well, that's just going to be left empty then for 40 years because nobody wants that. They don't want that. We don't want that. I just don't, I don't actually believe that's what would happen. But I'll leave that at that. Can we have a local preference so that these high-end market rate places aren't just somebody's second, third vacation playground? They don't really live here?
In terms of a local preference, need to research that a little bit more in terms of some constitutional limitations on things like right to travel and such. But in terms of putting in a requirement that they be leased to people who live there as a, basically, full-time residents, I think that's something that we could talk to A.B. about and probably could do.
Okay. Oh, that's an encouraging answer. Thank you. Could they possibly have ownership opportunities?
I think that would be challenging, given the economics, and that's not sort of the model that they looked at. I mean, I don't know, Dina or Pat, if you have any response. Yeah, yeah. But we can, we can ask, but I think, given the way that the finances of the project are working, ownership is not.
Okay. And these are questions from community members, too, that I think, that's why I think it's important to be asking them in open session. Could the banking, I know we haven't really done this before, but can we preset what that banking buys in the future? Like, up to a certain number of units in the future? Or is that bank sort of indefinitely open to be like whatever they propose for future market rate banking the affordable units?
I think that's a negotiating point. Yeah, I would think if, if they wanted to propose another 250 units on the site or, you know, because that would probably be all it would accommodate, we could probably put a cap on how many of the affordable units would, could qualify. So I think we could, we could talk through that.
Okay. I'd be in favor of that, instead of just an open, open bank for the future. And then is there anything we agree to today that's set out in here that would supersede our full authority to consider this State Street master plan in any way we wish when it comes to us in the fall? Is there anything here that we would be agreeing to that would be like, oh, no, we can't, we can't do anything in the master plan because we already agreed with A.B. that X, Y, Z?
There's, as far as the terms of the deal have been laid out, there are no constraints on any of the public right-of-way that would be subject to the master plan. So this deal, regardless, as we've talked with the developers, regardless of what happens with the master plan, this deal would go forward.
Okay. Thank you. And then at some point, I guess, well, I guess I'll make it a comment, but a question, but at some point, stormwater will have to be figured out. Is that, yes, okay. So that's not in this part of the deal yet. Okay. And then, yeah, I guess the question has been asked, what happens if they sell it? And I guess, I don't really quite understand. That's just not worked out yet? If they sell it, what happens?
I mean, they could sell it. A lot of developers will transfer a property. You know, I think they, it would be the, I mean, I think as part of the development agreement, we would have, you know, sort of council approval of if they were going to transfer it before they decided to build it. We'd have to double-check, but I think the assumption is they will build it. If they decide to sell the project at some point in the future, that would be their prerogative to do that.
Would they already have the land?
If the units were built, yes.
So only if it's built? I guess that's what I'm getting at. Like, they can't sell it until it's all built and done?
We could, we could put that in as a condition in the...
We haven't developed all the conditions of the Development Disposition Agreement and when the, when the land actually transfers and all those kinds of things.
Those are things.
But there may be a necessity, for example, to transfer in order to get certain things done. But any transfer would be subject to all of the requirements. So you couldn't transfer the property in order to avoid a promise, for example, to complete the project in five years.
Okay. Thank you. I'll leave it at those questions.
Ms. Harmon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. I think most of mine were asked. And the first actually was on where Councilmember Sneddon left off, and I just want to drill down a little bit because that is one of my major concerns also. And so to be clear, we can condition the fee transfer such that if they sell prior to construction, we have full approval of the proposed transferee. And what I mean specifically is I really don't want to see language like, "our consent can't be unreasonably withheld, conditioned, or delayed." I want to be able to be however I want to be in my consent or non-consent thereof.
I like including in contracts that my client maintains the maximum control over the entire length of the project.
Again, that's a negotiating, it's a negotiating point, you know? So that's, I mean, that was something we would have to bring to the table, and yes.
It's legally and theoretically possible.
I think so.
Perfect. Well, now you know what I'd like to see on that point. Thank you. And then my next question is around the property tax contribution. And we've spoken about this briefly, but is there some opportunity for us to engage with the county? So that 11% isn't on us, but it may be a shared burden? I think that there's certainly a benefit that accrues countywide. And I know, I mean, I just looked this up. 28% of the property tax goes to the county. Is there a possibility that they kick in that portion?
We, I absolutely can have that conversation with the county executive. You know, obviously, as you said, 28% of their, the dollar of property tax accrues to them. So they, with this redevelopment, they stand to see a significant increase in their property tax. So happy, if the council directs me to do that, to have that conversation.
Thank you very much. That is very important to me. So really excited about that possibility. Just two more quick ones. Are we envisioning, and I understand there's lots of sensitive negotiations here, and it's also highly complex. So I recognize that. I also recognize a profound public interest in both the process and what results from these negotiations. Have we thought about, or I guess I'm asking if we can think about some public engagement process during the course of these negotiations so that the city can really be brought along with us? And as part of that question, I also would love regular check-ins, but I'd like to maybe get some feedback on the idea of a public engagement process.
I think definitely there will be public engagement through the entitlement process as we normally do. I think through the negotiations, we would have to work closely with A.B. to structure that so that, you know, confidential business proprietary information is not shared. But I think there is absolutely a way that we could inform the council, whether that's in, you know, updates to the council. We can look at how to structure that in partnership.
Yeah, I think even town hall opportunities to just hear from folks, their hopes and dreams for this area would be really, I think, really helpful. And then my last question is maybe a bit too in the weeds, but it's come up now a couple times when we're talking about what could, what would theoretically happen if a deal doesn't get done here? And I think it was Councilmember Sneddon who brought up the point that A.B. has an interest in continuing even if the mall doesn't continue. But I guess my understanding was that it's currently operating at a significant loss. And so that changes the calculus for them as to whether they would want to continue. So I guess, I'm saying that as a statement, but I'm hoping I can, I'm looking at our consultants, if maybe they can give feedback on sort of, like, you can't tell me what's going to happen. But if they are operating at a loss, if they are looking at pennies on the... Like, what's going to weigh more heavily typically? Would they want to keep operating and keep accruing loss? Would they want to sell? Can you just weigh in a little bit on that?
Yeah, I think they don't know.
Okay.
Okay. They have said that the possibility is that they would certainly stop investing as much as they are investing, right? So we can't really answer that. And again, these are just the in-line shops that we're talking about. The Macy's building is vacant, and I would assume would remain vacant. And they would have no incentive to demolish it either unless there were some issue.
Do you think it's safe to say that whatever happens is probably nothing good?
I think it would be nothing particularly nice.
I mean, that's really helpful.
I'm right, yeah. I mean, I think, you know, and I don't think it's intended as a threat. I think this is just the reality, right? That the retail industry is shifting. In order to make it successful, you have to put some effort into it. And if you don't, then you get, then you sort of are just, it's just kind of a race to the bottom.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Shannon Maria.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. Have a few questions for our staff. I want to go back to Slide 29 about the affordable housing program. So we're talking about building the Affordable Housing Project on Lot 2, but we don't have that feasibility study yet. So if that feasibility study comes back with less than favorable results, in other words, it shows that it's not feasible to build the affordable units there, and A.B. is not going to build a project that is mixed market rate and affordable units, where would our affordable units go if we can't build them on Lot 2?
I don't think we know that they wouldn't do that. I mean, I think this is the, this is the current proposal. I think we would have to wait and see what, what happens if that feasibility says, study says, we can't use Lot 2. I mean, I think, I think that would be a continued negotiation.
I see. So my understanding from what I've, oh, please, go ahead.
Let me, let me just also clarify that an affordable housing project has a different financing structure than the market rate project does. So you look at feasibility in a different way, right? So the issue there is how much subsidy would be required because affordable units, you don't set the rate at the market, at market rate, whatever that is. You set the rate based on the incomes of the people who will live there and what they can afford. So that always generates a gap between what it costs to build, operate, and maintain the project and what the people living there can afford to pay, right? So then the question is, how expensive would it be to demolish and reconstruct part of the parking garage? And what does that really add to the project? So I think that's really the biggest question here is, and I think when we talk about feasibility, it's really how much subsidy is someone willing to put in to make the deal work? Does that make sense? It's just, I just want to clarify about the fact that feasibility means two different things in these contexts. There is a feasibility calculus on an affordable housing project, but it's different.
I think there's also an engineering feasibility.
Correct, yes.
Like, can we even build the units on Lot 2? And I think that it's the, both of those feasibilities that need to be evaluated. And I think that it's the, both of those feasibilities that need to be evaluated.
Right. Do we have an engineering feasibility study in the works as well?
No, because...
Or we only have, we only have the economic one first, I'm assuming?
No, we haven't done either because we're, we're waiting for direction from council that you're okay with this as a sort of general proposal. That would give us the ability to move forward with those studies.
I see. So, sorry, let me, let me clarify my question. So today, we're giving direction on an economic feasibility study, but we're not giving any direction on an engineering.
No, it would be, it would be both.
It would be both? Okay, it would be both, okay.
I mean, we're not, it, it, like, the city's not paying for those, but we would work with the housing authority and AB and sort of start to dig into those details. But it would be, it would be all of those elements, can they even build the units from an engineering and construction standpoint?
Sure, okay, that makes sense. So, thank you to our consultants for, for that explanation. That's really helpful. And I think when we're talking about economic feasibility, so that, that's where, or even engineering feasibility, if it's not feasible in any way to build our affordable units on Lot 2, and we know that typically a developer will want to keep the market rate separate from low income so that it's easier to finance. So that's where, that's what my question is, is if that's, if that's what the developer would want, right? And my understanding is that's, that's the way that they, this has been proposed, this is what they're aiming for, but we can't do it on Lot 2, would we be able to go back into those negotiations to, to, to look at doing a mixed use? I mean, I know it's not ideal, right?
I think if, I think if that feasibility does not pan out, that would be something we'd come back to the council pretty quickly with, and we'd work with AB to figure out what is the alternative. And that would be something we'd probably come back fairly quickly with if that wasn't going to work out.
I see. Okay, thank you. Just a few more questions. So for, for this slide, it says between 12 and 25 of these units will be used to satisfy the current requirements for affordable housing. Does that translate to if we go through with this deal and the construction goes through, everything's great, we would only see 12 to 25 of these units on that Lot 2 site, and then the rest are banked? Or can you explain a little bit about how that works?
So they would have to, they were, they would build all 80 units. And then what would happen is people would occupy those units, and just in theory, instead of if new units, market rate units are built on the Paseo Nuevo site, instead of having to build more affordable units, they would just take credit for the units that have already been constructed.
I see, I see, okay. And we mentioned before about implementing a sort of a cap on how many of those could be counted towards a, a new development, okay?
And that would be a negotiating point we'd have to work with.
I see, okay. So, a couple of questions more. Do we, as the city, or, you know, the, the public, I guess, own that property that AB is leasing right now? Is that the city's property, or who owns that?
The, the city owns the land. AB owns the improvements on the land.
Right, okay. In that, so if, do we still have the ability to, this is just theoretical, but do we have the ability to walk away from the deal if we don't feel like we are getting the, you know, what we're, what we're hoping to achieve?
This is, this is not a final approval. The answer is yes. You will have the ability to, there will be a requirement for a public hearing and a requirement for action on a development and disposition agreement. If you don't like it, you can vote no.
Okay, I see. So once we, once we do the tran, the land transfer, do we have any real recourse to enforce the affordability unit numbers agreement, you know, the timeline of the concurrent developments? Like, do, can we, can we enforce that, or how does that work?
The answer is yes.
Okay, I see, I see, I see. And, let me see. If, if we, or when, when we would, if and when, we would transfer the land to AB, once they own it, down the line, could AB decide to pursue a builder's remedy project with, you know, in, in that, they, they could not?
The answer is no.
Yeah, the window for builder's remedy projects has passed at this point because it was related to adoption of the last cycle's housing element.
I see, okay.
In addition, if I may, they, they will be bound by the terms and conditions of the development disposition agreement, which they agree to. And so, they will be contractually obligated to the city to do everything that they promised to do in the development and disposition agreement. And that occurs before they get title to the land.
I see, okay. And my last question, if, you know, if, if we're, we, you know, we, we get to this agreement with AB, and if for whatever reason they fail to execute any of their, parts of their agreement on their end, would, what, do you think we would be out, what's the word? Out-resourced, I guess you could say, on our ability to litigate? Like, would, would this be sort of a losing battle? In other words, if the other party does not uphold their end of the deal for whatever reason, are we kind of just out of luck? Or do, do we anticipate, you know, being able to hold them to that?
I anticipate that our agreement that we write and approve will be enforceable and be easily enforceable. So no, I don't think we will be out-resourced.
Okay, just, just want to ask that. These are, a lot of these questions are coming from the community, and I want to make sure we ask these. My final point will just speak to what Councilmember Harmon, and I believe also what Councilmember Sneddon said about public outreach. And I know that as council, you know, there's been briefings, but the, the public has not had the, the ability or the luxury of getting clued into these details. And so there is still a lot of concern and speculation, and there may actually be inaccurate information out there. So I think as soon as that we can get a, a public outreach program out, that, you know, in any way that is council that we can, we can facilitate, that I think would be best. But, yeah, those are all my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, very good. Just a really quick one. I think it's for Ms. Connect. Do we, are all the former obligations, there was that really arcane, strange thing about a parking lot and some ongoing debt, things that we needed to clear up once we did all this, is that all being cleaned up as we do this process?
Mr. Mayor, so that which you're referring to is pretty much already resolved. There's no debt remaining from that, it's been, it's been negotiated. But yes, part of this would be amending or terminating the agreements that are in place. So those would all be rectified and...
Okay, so there's nothing left on the bottom of our shoes after we finish this little hike? With that, we will go to public comment. Mr. Grumbine?
All right, all right. Mayor, City Council, a few quick notes. I'm, I'm, while I'm Chair of HLC, we did not discuss this, so I'm not coming to you on their behalf, but I, I did want to at least make some notes as we go forward here, as I know that they all come up in the, in the future and near future, especially now that's public. So one is, I think that I'm, I'm, I think I'm safe to say that we would be, HLC would be very supportive of getting this issue of Paseo Nuevo fixed. So this is great. We're very excited about it. Well, I think we're going to be very excited about it in terms of a great improvement. The, the other note is that, you know, it's been almost 10 years, I think, of talking about bringing density downtown more and more. We're finally getting projects that are, which is tough because we're in El Pueblo Villa, and we have certain standards and design guidelines and neighborhood massings and heights and bulks and scale and all those things that have to be satisfied, which we find that regularly that good architects can solve and good designers. So it is, it's, it's always a challenge, but I think it's in the right place coming downtown with the density, even though we're in a historic district, better than going to the outskirts, which when we saw, it was always a problem with, like, on Garden Street or other places where large projects were trying to do housing there. We also understand that the state is not being easy on, on design review in terms of housing and exceptions. So we are also understanding what is happening lately with the state, sort of overlay, and so we're aware of that. And I do think that, that there can be very much a path forward. I would just very strongly encourage it come sooner rather than later to HLC, as we do find that projects come later usually get a lot more frustrated as they've invested a huge amount of time and money. And so it is better to have those conversations early and potentially even a setup to help the project along because there's obviously city, city interest for it to actually work. So it's on the, on the benefit of the public and the, and the citizens of Santa Barbara. So with all those things, I just want to bring it forward to you all. I think it's an extremely important project, and I think it's important to get density down there. So I'm excited to it. And maybe you can write into the agreement with AB that HLC has to totally love it, or... And since we're talking agreements, so there. And that was it. I just wanted to, yeah, bring up some issues now so that we can, we can get this ball rolling forward and hopefully have a really great project for the city, so. All right? And that was it.
Rich Applebaum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm here once again, representing Clues Housing and Homeless Justice Group. It's been quite informative. You've done a great job of bringing us to this point. To paraphrase Councilmember Jordan's earlier comments, I know it's been a long, slow slog. Although 500 units didn't work out, it's great that a quarter of the units that'll be there are destined, hopefully, for affordable housing. I think this project will shape the future of our city. So you've heard, I've heard all the questions from the City Council, they're questions that I have, so I'm going to sort of throw in my notes and just make one point in the interest of time. As I understand it, if you approve this going forward, the DDA will be negotiated by the city administrator and attorney. Once it's worked out, there will be a public hearing and a City Council vote. I would strongly urge you to get more public input before the train leaves the station. I mean, this has been a great meeting, there are only a few of us here, there's a huge amount of information. I think the public should get all the information that it is legally entitled to. I know that some financials can't be shared, but I imagine that many of you sitting before me also lack all the information that you need right now. So I would make the final point, that the city set really an excellent example with Measure I in transparency and public participation, getting lots of information, lots of forums and so forth. I think that this deserves at least as much attention as Measure I because I think it is far more consequential in terms of its future. So I would propose, I don't know if this is realistic, that you postpone sending this forward until you can at least have some public discussion and have an informed public, or at least find some way to assure us that this isn't going to be discussed, you know, by the experts, the people who know, the engineers and so on. And then one final swoop, we'll come back to the City Council, there'll be a public hearing, and it'll be a done deal. I really hope that we can have an informed discussion. In concept, I approve this, I think it's a great step forward, but there are so many unanswered questions. And I think the public deserves the information and the time to ask those questions and get them answered. Thank you.
So Lee Heller appears to have left. So Diane Black?
Lee Heller's online, so we'll get to, yeah, we'll get to her when we do the online speakers.
Mayor Rouse and City Council members, I don't even know quite how to comment now because so many of the issues that we brought up in our letter really have been addressed by, by council. But I think I'll, I'll start with Rich and his comments, and I think, I'm not going to ask you to postpone your action today to direct staff to move forward, but I do think that the city has got to get better at public processes. Having four days to absorb this material and not be able to ask, ask questions or get your questions answered, or even really even talk to any of you, is just not a good way to move forward. So that can't happen. The development agreement cannot come forward at the next hearing and, and not have additional opportunities for public input. So I really think that's important. And I think it's important more than just on this project, I think it's important on a lot of projects. But maybe I'll do a general public comment someday on that. I just want to highlight the, the things that we think are really important to ensure that we get the most benefit from this project. And we do support this in concept. We're excited that there's going to be an affordable housing project on a parking site, something we've asked that the city do. So we're, we're, we're super excited that, that we're going to try and test that out. But we do think that it needs to be explicit that the affordable units will be built concurrently or in advance of the market rate units, that the deed restriction is very clear, the longer the better, that local preference is, it's key. And certainly occupancy by full-time residents is key throughout this project. We're not going to get a revitalized downtown if we have a bunch of people who don't live here, you know, coming up for a weekend once a month. That's not going to revitalize our town with housing. So we really do need to have people who live here in those units. We, we strongly recommend that you restrict the use of the banked units to additional housing at Paseo Nuevo and not throughout the downtown area. And then we would ask that you look for some for-sale component because we're just missing that. We have very few for-sale projects in the city. And then, just one last comment. As a member of the State Street Advisory Committee, I really hope that the rendering showing cars on State Street does not foreclose opportunities in the State Street Master Plan that's to come before you, hopefully in October. Thank you.
Hey, Barry Remus?
Okay, and good afternoon, Mayor Rouse and City Council members. I do want to take a quick opportunity because I was here, got here late and missed the consent calendar. We want to thank you on behalf of MoveCin, Republic of the County, for your approval of the appropriation of the funds for the ASIP, excuse me, H-SIP safety, that'll, those safety improvements will go a long way. Regarding Paseo Nuevo, it's great to see this fluctuation and move to more affordable housing and, and the higher density. The staff report lists the sustainability impact, and in the sustainability impact that's listed quickly, it says additionally, "By integrating housing and retail in a walkable downtown location, the project supports transit use and reduces vehicle miles traveled, contributing to greenhouse gas reduction goals." Move would like to ask that you direct staff to construct the disposition and development agreement such that it contains an amended sustainability impact agreement that states, "By integrating housing and retail in a walkable and bikeable downtown location, the project supports active transportation modes and transit use and reduces vehicle miles travels, contributing to greenhouse gas reductions per the city's climate action plan." Just making a little bit of beef here. And as you can see by the written public comments that you've received, several of which, the renderings that show a wonderful market, which would be great, be really great to be able to incorporate an equitable market, something that would be able to attract equal portions of the community and not alienate some from others and not get too elitist on that. But it shows sidewalk dining, which is fantastic. But wait, no. If there's cars on State Street and my food is peppered with a complimentary dosage of exhaust fumes, cancel my reservation. We do want to really emphasize that we want to be able to try to listen to the, the majority of the community that's, that's stressed, that the, their desire to keep State Street car-free. And as we continue with this disposition and development agreement, which really does sound like encouraging, that we keep those, those, that feedback in mind as you proceed forward and as you make further decisions. We realize you're not deciding that here and now. And that should do it. Thank you very much.
Robin Elander?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Robin Elander, and I'm the Executive Director of the Downtown Santa Barbara Improvement Association. I want to express our strong support for the city of Santa Barbara and AB as they work together to bring this Paseo Nuevo redevelopment project to fruition. We commend both the city and AB for their collaborative approach and shared commitment to finding a viable path forward. This major project has the potential to infuse significant new energy into the heart of Santa Barbara, transforming a key downtown property into a more dynamic hub of housing, retail, and community life. We're particularly encouraged by the inclusion of much-needed housing. Even though it's a little bit less than what was there before, it's still significant, as well as the attention to upgraded public spaces that prioritize a welcoming environment for all. This kind of vision is exactly what's needed for, to ensure our downtown remains economically vibrant, inclusive, and physically inviting. We thank both the city and for their leadership, creativity, and willingness to invest in the future of our downtown district. Please consider the DSBIA a partner in your efforts, and let us know how we can best support in helping bring this important project to fruition. Thank you.
Lena Honigman? Linda Honigman.
I'm Linda Honigman, sharing highlights from the Strong Towns letter because apparently I'm the only one that is unemployed. We support going to the next phase of Paseo Nuevo redevelopment, assuming that the majority of you are comfortable with what you hear today. It is disappointing that we can't get as many units as hoped for, but 80 affordable units will be helpful. We look forward to returning to the excitement felt in the two last Septembers when Council shared priorities for Paseo Nuevo and agreed on the grand Paseo vision for State Street. The city and the AB team can ensure livability of this 700 block by promoting that vision, which includes a pedestrian-first design philosophy, a vibrant mixed-use neighborhood that celebrates community, and a 20-foot emergency access lane that can also be used for bikes and transit. I guess the artists who produced the graphic with Cars on State Street did not get that memo. We are glad that you're keeping the Center Stage Theater and the Arts Museum since they are important to the community. We do have concerns about how enough affordable housing can be produced in the city during Housing Cycle VI to satisfy our needs and RINA mandates. There will be more projects like this one in our high-density areas, a barbell approach with 75% to 85% market rate at one end, rentals, and 15% to 25% lower income at the other end, with few affordable units for workers who do not qualify for subsidies. We need to be proactive to improve production outcomes. There is interest in models that could help us with affordability and livability, such as mixed-use buildings with themes like greenhouse or maker house that include housing for a range of incomes above work and retail spaces. A successful example is working artist Ventura. And a mid-density example is El Zoco on Bath Street, live-work townhomes that offered assistance to purchase some years ago. There's also interest in condos to purchase and exploring limited equity cooperatives, and we may want to use community land trusts to help preserve public land that could be used for affordable production. On a personal note, family members on a date night checked out their local Era One and had a good experience with yummy food that seemed special at a fair price. I like the special part, so I think we need more of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Frederick Janke.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. I'm Frederick Janke, President of the Board of the Museum of Contemporary Art Santa Barbara. I know some of you. Wanted to thank you, a big thank you to city staff and Council for working with AB to move forward this project to reimagine Paseo Nuevo while at the same time keeping critical quality-of-life amenities and project stakeholders, such as the Museum of Contemporary Art Santa Barbara and Stener Stage Theater in the planning process. We are proud that the arts terrace was the result of a combination of community activism and city leadership by those that came before us. We hope your commitment to this project will also encourage AB to make much-needed deferred maintenance to the property, especially around accessibility. At MCSB, we believe in the transformative power of art and artists to impact our community for the better. We look forward to having the opportunity to be welcomed to the planning table. We are happy to co-host public planning events and help the project center the arts and artists in a reimagined Paseo Nuevo that very importantly includes much-needed housing, but also the only dedicated contemporary art museum between Los Angeles and the San Francisco Bay Area. We are not only advocates for housing, but we also want to advocate for a positive environmental impact, a percent for art to be a part of the planning, for public art to be critical to the featured amenities, for artists at the planning table, and for an artist residency partnership as part of the new housing development, among many constructive ideas and experience and resources we have to contribute. We will be celebrating the 50th anniversary of the museum in 2026 and look forward to embarking on our shared future of the city-centered district, the heart of Santa Barbara, together. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, speakers online.
We, excuse me, we have five speakers. We have Stephen Logan, Mimi Doe, Anna RC, Trey Pinner. Okay, six, a few more. Steve Johnson, Ron Robertson, and Lee Heller had indicated she was to speak. I don't, Lee, I don't see you on. Please log on if you do wish to speak. So we'll start with Stephen Logan. Stephen Logan, please go ahead.
Thank you very much, and good evening. My name is Stephen Logan with Shopoff, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for hearing us tonight. I first wanted to state that we are in favor of seeing a redevelopment of the Old Northstrom Building, including the Paseo Nuevo property. About a year ago, we began discussions with the City Alliance Bernstein to share thoughts on how best to engage all parties for the site. At this time, we agreed to share information collectively about our projects. We submitted a pre-development application in August and shared these plans with the city and AB. There were ongoing meetings on a monthly basis with the city and developer where the developer was to share their vision, and that was AB. This never happened. We also discussed ways to help with the CCNRs and the parking agreements to make both projects work collectively. This never happened. We want to state again, to see this redeveloped, however, we believe there should be an even playing field. We have had conversations with the city but have not been a party to the current issues being discussed today. We are uncertain how the city and developer, AB, can allocate the fee under our building to development to help their project work. What is the valuation? How is this being achieved? What about our project? We found it, you know, we have a pre-application and now to move our project forward. What about our rights for our building? Why are we not subject to getting financial help, as indicated in the staff report today? Ms. McAdoo has stated that AB is not a developer, however, she stated many times in this presentation that they are, and it's, you know, how they obtain the land should not be an issue. Why aren't we all working together to have a best overall project to the city? Why are some of the CCNRs' issues not in further negotiation with everyone? This is a big issue that needs more, much more discussion and feel it's being glossed over. We do have the right on this property, and without our cooperation, nothing can happen here. Just why haven't we been more involved in the last eight months? We are a key component to this redevelopment, and as stated, we are not getting the same fair share treatment, and we would like to see that moving forward. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Mimi Doe. Mimi Doe, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Mimi Doe. I'm speaking on behalf of the Music Academy of the West. We are newly owners of 901 State Street, which is directly adjacent to parking lot number two, which we were concerned about the, to find the plans just five days ago, removing 187 parking spots from that parking lot to accommodate the development of the project. While we do support an affordable housing project, absolutely, we are similarly disappointed that we have not been involved in this process or that the previous owner, you know, I don't think was aware of these activities. And so, you know, despite our deep vetting process, this is new news to us as of last week. You know, removing parking spaces in a busy area, which will soon include our music education center, the Film Society's new film center, a 10-unit hotel, is going to reduce the accessibility and functionality of the area when we are really trying to help be part of the revitalization of State Street. Providing such short notice before this vote on this amendment is really disrespectful and difficult for the surrounding owners, so we hope to be more involved in discussions and process going further. Furthermore, the height of the building, of the 75 feet that was discussed, does seem unreasonable and unsustainable for us and with the plans that we have in terms of this project as well. Otherwise, I do thank you all for your time and your consideration in this matter. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Anna RC. Anna RC, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so good afternoon, everybody. So as you all know, I'm Anna, policy advocate at Cause, and we're encouraged to see the progress on the Paseo Nuevo redevelopment, especially the inclusion of 80 affordable units and building affordable units concurrently with the market rate units proposed for the Macy's site. This is a meaningful step towards addressing our affordable housing shortage, and we also acknowledge the challenges that city has in making progress to, on the housing element that requires planning for almost 5,000 affordable units. We also recommend, Council, and thank you for answering most of our questions, to continue to direct staff to research local preference requirements. All the units should first be made available to those who live and work in the community, of course, you know, after researching and seeing what is possible, and then also having those additional stakeholder meetings during the process, and also including long-term tenants, students, city workers, hospitality workers, and folks who have experienced homelessness and a wide range of our community to contribute input with this new development. And also personally, I am also curious with what our current downtown workforce input is with this project and how construction may impact businesses during this time. This may also be an opportunity to look into like pop-ups at the Laguera Plaza or like other creative ideas to ensure that our current workforce downtown and our current businesses still thrive during whatever construction time is happening. And then we also urge the city to continue preserving community spaces to prioritize a pedestrian-first planning on the 700 block. We encourage the City Council to use this opportunity to continue to identify publicly-owned land for future affordable housing and to explore alternative models like community land trust, co-ops, and co-living, moving beyond the current market-heavy development pattern, moving towards equitable housing solutions that the City Council can support without compromising livability and affordability in our city. Thank you for your time and for keeping the needs of our local city workers, families, and community at the center of your decisions. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Trey Pinner. Trey Pinner, please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the Council. It's always a pleasure, great opportunity to speak with you. I recognize this is obviously a very, very large topic, and I do want to follow with some of the previous comments regarding the concern regarding the amount of time to absorb all the information and data put forth by this project and the ability for the community to comment on it. But really what I want to speak to you today as, is your Chair of the Downtown Parking Committee. It was only on Monday, since I was out of town over this weekend, that I learned about the inclusion of Lot Two being even considered as part of this project, and I think it would really be important for the Downtown Parking Committee to have time and input for you, the Council, on how this, these proposed changes to the parking lot and possible loss of the ownership of that land, how that would affect the downtown parking system. I recognize that Ms. McAdoo and Mr. Henchkey has clearly identified there's a lot to figure out with regards to this addition to the project, but I would be very cautious about agreeing today to put the project in the surplus land act until you really had the details of what that means to give up or potentially give up this lot, although I am very encouraged and supportive of the impact of the additional low-income housing that it would provide for downtown. I do think the understanding of how it impacts the downtown parking assets needs to be understood. As you know, we've already given up two lots, the lot where now the leased apartment is going to be built and the Creole commuter lot. Both those lots have already been removed as a downtown parking asset, and I think before doing another lot, we need to understand those economic benefits or how the economics impacts to the parking system could be made better, also understanding how it could be better for the city as far as what you're proposing there. So I thank you, and I look forward to the opportunity to review this and comment further on this project.
All right, any further speakers online?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, two more speakers. We have Steve Johnson, and then we'll have Ron Robertson as the last speaker. Steve Johnson, please go ahead.
Hope I can be heard. Thank you for the opportunity. I want to note that part of the Macy's project is in a flood zone, and the project as proposed appears to me to be residential over a basement in a flood zone. That's an issue. Another concern is the considerable risk that's involved in demolishing the Macy's building. It's going to be extremely unpleasant for the downtown during that demolition. An alternative is to build the market rate housing on Lot Two and adaptively reuse the Macy's building for moderate-income housing. That would also address the problem that the proposed project produces zero moderate-income units. The number is zero, continuing the city's track record for the last 45 years. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next speaker, please.
Final speaker is Ron Robertson. Ron Robertson, please go ahead. Ron Robertson, you can unmute yourself and go ahead. Ron Robertson, unmute yourself and go ahead. And that's the final speaker, Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good. Let's go ahead and bring this back to Council.
Council, could you give us three more minutes to your time, please?
What?
I do, I do, I'm on time. I wanted.
Okay, we need some quiet up here, please. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm closing.
We're already done with public comment on this item. Ms. Sneddon.
No. I said no. Yes, I'm glad.
Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Rouse. So, you know, you mentioned this started in 1989. 1989 was the year that my husband and I graduated Santa Barbara High, and I remember Pinkadeli Square. I know, Mayor Rouse, you do as well. Had my second ear pierced done at Pinkadeli Square. Ironically, my youngest, our youngest daughter, is graduating Santa Barbara High this coming year, so it's truly generational, and it really, that really struck me how different the world was in 1989, and Mr. Henchkey, to your point about like in 99 years, I don't know what the world is going to be or not going to be, and I think it's both generational but also kind of passes in the blink of an eye in both ways. And so the decisions we make ongoing here, not exactly today because we know this is still a long way to go, and I really want to emphasize that, that this is not the decision day, but, you know, they are going to have lasting impacts, and so I don't want to be rushed either. I don't want to be rushed through design process. I understand we're all excited, want this to happen. I also want this to happen. Councilmember Friedman and I will both remember that in 2017, when we Councilmember Friedman and I will both remember that in 2017, when we first ran, the Macy's building was the topic at every forum. I mean, it was, what are you going to do with that? Make it housing, make it housing. And that's a long time ago now. So, talking about generationally, to have, you know, seven, eight years pass by where it's still just languishing is not acceptable. So, I understand both the urgency of there's this opportunity, let's make it happen, but also I don't want to feel that what we're just going to accept certain things if we're not really ready for them either. So, what I also remember about 2017 and those years around there is there was so much public engagement. There were meetings at the Macy's building. There were meetings with, with members of other cities. I mean, there was hosted meetings that were mediated by, I think it was City Administrator of San Luis Obispo at the time. It was understood that it was regionally important, not just a downtown issue, not just a city issue, but regionally matters. And so, I would really like to bring that perspective back. So, with that in mind, working with the county, having those conversations, and also having much more public engagement, sharing with the public what, what we're thinking, what AB is thinking, let's be proud of it, let's showcase it. I will share that I also felt ill-prepared up until today, even though we had briefings, even though we had little meetings, it was, there were still lingering questions, lingering questions, and what about this and what about that? And I, I feel more comfortable right now, but I don't feel that I fully understand everything. I want to believe, I want it to happen. It looks beautiful. I want there to be housing and affordable housing. But I also want to be cautious that we don't say we need this so desperately that we will, we will throw anything at it. So, very optimistically, cautiously optimistic, but, but also I want to, I want to retain that control over handing it all over. It's, it's a big deal. It was a big deal to acquire the land. It's going to be a big deal to not acquire the land. So, just going to what, what I would hope is going to continue on, I think it looks beautiful. I will say that. I think that really makes a really big difference. I'm really glad, actually, that the number of market rate units on the mall itself have been reduced and fit much more, even though it's a 75 building height, which I don't love, but we have no control over that. I'm glad it's not 75 feet and the infill of the entire city block. So, I think that's really an improvement, a direction to work with our authority, authorizing work with our housing authority on the affordable units. If we are going to be transferring land from Lot Two, I would rather the land transfer goes to the housing authority instead of to AB and then the housing authority and then agreement between them. It seems like that would be cleaner to just go directly in the same way that we did for the Creole lot or other lots. I also share sort of the, you know, there's all these things that are so close in timing right now. We, we are actively doing a study on our suitable sites for our parking lots and what's in play and what isn't in play and what's going to go where. So, it seems premature. And to Mr. Pinner's comments, I'm actually a little bit surprised that this hasn't gone to the Downtown Parking Committee. I mean, they have very few, you know, this is one of their real functions, is looking at the, the parking on the sites, so...
So, I will just say that the, we didn't take it there first because we hadn't previewed it with the council. So, I think that is, I have, there will be a whole community engaged, we will do like the, you know, Paseo Nuevo tour of every stakeholder group around downtown, answer questions, all of the things that haven't, we, we had to wait until we previewed it with council before and make sure, because if the council wasn't comfortable with some of the elements, it, it wouldn't make sense to move forward talking publicly because AB wanted reassurance. The council at least wants us to continue the conversations. So, I think that was the, you know, they're spending a lot of money in, in, you know, preparing these plans and, and doing the work behind the scenes. And I think they wanted some reassurance. The council is like, okay, we're, we're good with this concept. We like the reduced unit count. We like the affordable units. Now go, now it's, it's our turn to go off and sort of talk to everyone about that.
Fair enough. And I understand it's a chicken and egg kind of thing. You can't talk to the housing authority before we talk to us, even once you talk to us and talk to housing authority. But along those lines, I'm a little uncomfortable voting on this resolution or what to do with Lot Two. If, I mean, I'm, I'm fine saying verbally, sounds good, keep talking about it, but, but kind of any formal action on that until it's gone to the feasibility study, downtown parking, housing authority, I'm not sure what exactly we're, would be voting on today on that.
Let me, let me address the, the Surplus Lands Act issue, if I may, Honorable Mayor. The, the action that you were taking today to declare the property to be exempt from the Surplus Lands Act simply means that you can go out and, and start negotiating and start dealing with how to dispose of it, if you want to ultimately dispose of it in the future. It is a prerequisite, it is, it does not require you to do anything, but unless you adopt this resolution, you can't do anything.
Understood. Thank you.
And then the other thing is Lot Two was part of the Paseo Nuevo development. It is unlike the other parking lots within the city. It is inextricably intertwined with the development of Paseo Nuevo, which is why the, we're, we're basically amending the prior declarations that applied to Paseo Nuevo to include a part of Paseo Nuevo, which is Lot Two.
Thank you. And thank you for clarifying that and bringing up how that ties into the other study we're doing and looking at the, the lots. So, when you, when, once this goes and we can start talking to it, I think it's going to be very important to talk to Downtown Parking Committee, but also other property owners, music academy property owners. I know we've done some discussions about if there's adaptive reuse, who might be using that parking. It seems to me that that's a parking lot that we, we kind of throw around as, oh, you can use that one, use that parking lot. So, I want to be sure that we are talking to everybody on that. And I, I, I like that we're continuing to honor the Museum of Contemporary Art space and the Center Stage Theater. And that was very early on, one of the concerns. And so, it's, I'm really happy to see that when we keep the central part of the mall intact like that. And the community loves the updates to that central part and also the, the access to the arts there. So, I think it's a real asset that, that, that central portion isn't being demolished in, in this current plan. I would like to look at a cap on how many units that, that banking would in the future sort of buy, and that those should only be within the mall footprint itself, not someplace else within the city. I would like to expedite this, but not at the expense of design. So, I think working with HLC early and, you know, maybe they could have a subcommittee. I mean, this is generational. It really matters. And maybe we have a time limit on HLC, how much it weighs in, but sort of an unlimited number of times that they might meet with a subcommittee or the committee to, to get it right, just some, something creative in there where it's not just two meetings done and, and we're, we're stuck with what we're stuck with. And if, since it's a development agreement, maybe we could get them to agree to, to more meetings for the betterment of the project, but up to a certain deadline, so it's not like holding, holding things up. I think we need to be really firm and clear on the what-if-they-sell question. I'm, I'm encouraged by Mr. Henske's remarks about maintaining control of that, but until we see the actual terms of that, I just want to keep reiterating that. That's going to be the question from the public and when we really need a clear answer on authorize the necessary feasibility studies. Really, for the market, I think consider a more community-type of market, like a Sprouts or something, and maybe consider having that on the Lot Two site instead of being the anchor for the high-end market rate site. And again, that's not directed, but just consider it. I'm, I'm just not sure, well, I am sure that, that I would prefer a community-type of market over a, a high-end specialty market. I really want to make the note that the images with cars in them are no way an agreement or a suggested agreement on our part, that that is what's agreed upon today. Nothing in today preempts our ability to be able to fully consider years-long master plan that we haven't seen yet but are going to see soon. So, I really want to emphasize that. I'm not in favor of any discussion of sales tax. Just, just put that out there now. I'm not in favor of transferring the land of Lot Two to AB, but if we're working with housing authority to get those tax credits and all of that, then let's consider, you know, transferring that land directly to them, but then having them built concurrently under AB. I do completely support more public meetings, and I think it's a great offer to have that at the Museum of Contemporary Art. What better place? What, what a great idea. So, appreciate that. Appreciate still supporting the arts. And I think I'll close with saying, I think it's really important that this be in line with our adopted ecological framework for downtown. So, I realize it's early days, but since we're talking about, I'll be sure everything's good with HLC, I'd like to also say, well, let's be sure that we're doing passive cooling systems if we can, or, you know, directional units for, for the wind patterns or solar or whatever it is. And continuing the discussion with stormwater, that's going to be a big issue, obviously, and I just want to make note of it, that it's not, not forgotten. And, yeah, I just, it's literally been a generation of Sneddon's and then a generation before that of, of what went on before. So, I, I, I know we all really care about this a lot, and thank you, thank you for bringing it forward. Thank you for keeping things moving.
Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What could go wrong? Okay? I don't think I can talk that long. So, I agree with much of what was just said, conceptually, but I'm cautioned by, I can go to Home Depot, Home Depot tomorrow, and a two-by-four is more expensive than it was today. So, every day, this doesn't move forward at the rate that it needs to move forward is another day that the project is more expensive, our contribution increases, and the outcome is less certain. So, call me whatever you want to call me, you know, doom, gloom, whatever, but there is some balance here on what we want versus what somebody's going to give us. And I think we need to, like, look at that with our eyes wide open. I agree whatsoever, I, I agree with whatever you've heard about outreach. But again, I think, I don't know who said it, Diane Black probably, we'll blame her, not me. We do a really poor job, I think, generally at that. And I will just give you some examples. The letter from Diane Black in League of Women Voters questioned the small amount of, of low-income housing, which is the largest amount of low-income housing in any market-rate project in the history of my dealing with the city. Questioned the height of the building. I think the, the clue people did too, questioned the height of the building. So, if we're going to go through those show-and-tells, I think it'd be to our benefit to hand out a primer on how we got here, so we don't spend three hours out of the four hours continuing to say, we have no role in this building being 70-some feet tall. It's done. You know, the, that, that, why is the city, how can the city own the property and not be charging rent? Rent was never going to be charged on this property. The guy who wrote this thing in 1989 would never do this same deal again today. And then, you know, like, what do they get for a bonus density? Why, why is there a connection to Lot Two and they can claim those parking spots regardless of what anybody else thinks? I don't know, and any other California miserable laws that we're forced to follow, that type of thing. But it just seems like when we go out there, you know, tomorrow, when the news, when the news is out, or the next day when the news is out, the online forums are going to be full of how just messed up is that we're allowing a 70-foot building to be built, okay? I don't need to fight that argument over and over and over again. I need to get to the real points that you want to hear on community involvement and participation with the development of the project, tangible things that, that mean something. Having lived through those two formerly mentioned holes in the ground, this just always scares me, big projects like this, because the world changes overnight and whatever. And I think our failure to perform, our, our failure to perform on AB's part needs to be bulletproof. It has to be something that makes us whole and is bulletproof if something happens there. So, we don't end up with half a project or a demoed lot and, which is worse than what's there now, totally. So, and then, I'm concerned too on the future-looking thing on, yeah, they're not touching like the, the arts in the theater building now, but their banking units to come back later. So, their offer of, the offer of it, oh, look, we're keeping it there now, is kind of like a false offer to me, because after I'm dead, they could come back and say, now we're going to knock those buildings down. And, oh, sorry, we never agreed to keep those functions there. So, I think if those are something that means, are meaningful to us, we need to bake those into our agreement that they stay and in whatever, whatever future iteration of, of that property is, if you build around it, they still stay. If you knock that building down, they have to replace those functions there. And there might be something else over there too that's worth it with that, I don't know. And then finally, just two things we're always shilling for and getting knocked down on in our other project work. Space for a childcare center. So, I haven't seen the bedroom mixes, but if the bedroom mixes are going to be above two, if there are going to be three-bedroom mixes up there, why are, I mean, we got to start addressing this so you're not having to go down to the basement, put your kids in a car, and drive five miles to get them to childcare. I know there's a huge problem with finding spaces, finding employees, making it worth on the math, but one remedy might be to negotiate with them for a space that's rent-free, and then you can worry about the other. And then, the equivalent too of a dedicated community space slash space for a satellite library, something also Eric and I worked on with the Taylor project up at Lacumbre that's probably not going to happen. But those, those two things on a project this size seem to be needed wherever you place them in the city. And to the extent that they can carve out, you know, the least attractive space from their project standpoint, is still good space for us to have under those terms. So, that'd be my only input today. Everything else you're ready to move forward on, I'm ready to move forward on. Again, I just, literally, the two-by-four is going to cost more than a week, it's going to cost more than another week, and it's just going to get worse and worse. So, either we need to help move this forward as quickly as possible with the goals we want and the participation we want, or we just need to not, because if it just dies a sad, slow slog of a death, it's not going to be pleasant.
I, I will just comment on the community outreach, because I know that's going to probably come up for everyone. I, I don't think that community outreach has to slow down progress on the project, because the community outreach is really to explain what is happening, like the, the, the why we're here, the why the project, what, what we're doing. Those pieces are not going to really change dramatically. And so, I think we can do the circuit of all of the me, all of the community, everything, and start, get that conversation out, so while we're continuing negotiations and doing the other things, so.
Thank you for that. Mr. Friedman.
Thank you. Mr. Henske, I have a question, and it gets to the, the parking lot. If it was, because it's relevant to my comments, but if it was given to the housing authority, would it be, that would be property tax exempt? If the, if the, I want to understand if it would be property tax exempt if the housing authority became the new owner? And then conversely, we went through with what's being proposed now, if AB remained it and remained the owner, and even if they had a long-term lease on their, I'm just wondering...
It doesn't matter who the owner is. It's the, the, the affordable units are property tax exempt.
Okay, I just wanted to be, I just wanted to be sure on that, and if there is an advantage to having it go to the housing authority or not? That was my question.
I, I don't know if there's an advantage of having it go to the housing authority or not.
not at this stage of the game. It's something that we need to investigate and put together as part of the entire development package that's documented by the DDA. We need to talk to the Housing Authority. There may be other housing providers, low-income housing providers, that can do it better and cheaper. We don't know yet.
Okay.
But that's the, we can't start the conversation, as the city administrator mentioned, until the council tells us to go out and do it.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to hear, is it's not a done deal either way, and there's different options. And we also do need to check with AB if there's a reason on their end that they would want to maintain it. So, that all needs to be discussed, so I don't want to say, only go down this path today. It's an option, was being discussed, but.
I think that's what we're, yes, we're asking for the option to have those discussions.
Right.
Perfect, yeah. So, I'll just, I'll try to be really brief. I agree a lot with what my colleagues are saying. This is a very important project that will shape our city for generations to come. Going back 100 years ago, courthouse, the library, libero, all those decisions were made, the harbor, they were made, and we're all the beneficiaries of those decisions that were made 100 years ago. And this is, we'll be right up there along with it if we do this right, and there'll be a lot of benefits. The one thing that I always find is, in this job, is this interesting, is when I first got on council, it's like, you've got to make the right decision. And there really, a lot of times, there isn't a right decision. It's just, you have to make a well-informed, thoughtful, deliberative decision, and you're never going to have all your questions answered. There's always going to be some uncertainty. In this case, we're going to, we're entering a partnership with AB that they have a lot of uncertainty as well. And so, I just, it gives me comfort, because we've been down this road many times. And so far, and I'll just say to this project, since we've been on council, Councilmember Sneddon and I, and the mayor, when we first started, you were up here as a council member, this is by far the best opportunity we have for what our downtown vision is with the State Street Master Plan, for getting housing revitalization, supporting our local businesses. Just the ability to have those smaller storefront properties on the ground floor will lead to more local businesses, because the square footage will be smaller, so they're not having these huge places to rent, which will be a huge benefit. I remember, I think there was a plan for an IMAX theater there, and all these things that was under consideration. And that's where we come from. So, it's a long ways, and I would be remiss not only to thank our staff for doing a heck of lot of work, our consultants with you and AB. They have been, with our staff, have been fully transparent about what they want to do. We've, you know, there's developers that are not the best to work with, or responsive, and they have been the opposite, which shows the extent that this project's come through. So, I also believe there is a sense of urgency, one for the cost of the project, but it's also for the community, because until we have the certainty of what this project is, there's not going to be the investment that we want in downtown. But once we have that, and that certainty of what it is, and we're not citing that tonight, obviously, but we are going in a path, it's going to give all the investment in all the businesses down there, something to think about where the future's going to be. And the sooner we can do that, the more the revitalization of downtown will occur. And that's kind of our job within the next few months. And to the public outreach, yes, we can always improve it. I like the idea of using, whether it's the museum or the theater, as a public thing. But also, if there is that interest, we might use the Faulkner, but it needs to be somewhere downtown that's easily accessible for people. So, those are just locations that we could do. And so, with that, you know, I'm supportive of the staff direction. Also, be supportive of the actual vote on the Surplus Lands Act, because it just gives us that strategic advantage, that we, once we do it, we do it, and we don't have to worry about it again, and it takes one uncertainty off the table. So, I'm looking forward to this. I think it will be great in the long term, and more discussion to come, including the public. Thanks.
Ms. Harmon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm in agreement with almost everything that you've heard. I am, I, too, am really looking forward to the continued evolution of this project and to really digging into the details. I think it bears repeating, that housing downtown is just absolutely critical to our revitalization strategy. And this is such an important part of that. So, I'm really grateful to be here, grateful to everyone involved. I know this is really complex, and I think it's only going to get more complex from here on out. So, I appreciate your willingness to dive in. And to that point, yeah, I have to reiterate, I think it's important to do so. There are still a lot of really big, really important, really central questions about this deal that need to be negotiated. And so, I think it's important that we acknowledge that, and also acknowledge the excitement around what it looks like today, because I am cautiously really excited about it. I think there's a lot of potential here. I think there's a lot of opportunity for something generational that will be very positive for our downtown. I'm just going to make a couple of comments, so that I'm on record and you have a sense of where folks are on things. The public process element has been reiterated many times. I would just highlight, in addition to the roadshow with our boards and commissions, I would really love some opportunity, maybe at NCA SB, thank you, as Councilmember Sneddon said, for the public, who are not commissioners, to be able to be heard and ask questions, ideally, a couple of opportunities. I think that would go a long way in facilitating comfort. And then, also, specifically, check-ins for council. I don't know that that was mentioned specifically. You know, I know that's challenging, and I know how sensitive negotiations are, particularly negotiations of this nature, but to the extent that we can have those check-ins, I think it would be really, really helpful and would make that end-of-2025 conversation a lot smoother, if it was something regular that came to us. On the tax issues, I agree. I don't support the sales tax allocation. I'm also not particularly enthused on the property tax allocation, though, you know, I think if I look at the numbers when they come before us, I can imagine a scenario where it makes sense, but it's going to be a pretty high bar for me to feel totally comfortable with that. And I really would reiterate and encourage that we engage the county on that, because this is such a generational project, and there's so much opportunity to be beneficial to the county as a whole, that I would love some shared investment in that way. I think that would make me personally a lot more comfortable. I would also, I want to go on record requesting that we move as quickly as possible to get to resolution with regard to the Nordstrom parcel. I hear what's been said about efforts to engage, I know from our team certainly, but to the AB team, if you're listening, I would really ask, bless you, that we, in good faith, engage with one another with shopoff. I mean, we all need each other here. I mean, I think that's what I'm hearing today. This is kind of mutually assured success or destruction. And I would really ask for our community, that we engage with one another in a professional and as open a manner as is possible. To Mr. Henshaw, I know you will do this, but just reiterating my interest in appropriately-conditioned language around the fee transfer. I would really appreciate that, something I will be looking for, and want to just double down on Councilmember Jordan's comments around whether it's the performance bond, or whatever that looks like. I mean, I think that's really one of the biggest sort of ongoing concerns about a deal like this for me, so I, that's really important to me. And then, finally, local preference, concurrent building of affordable units. I just, yes to all of it. Very briefly, on the banked units, I think, maybe in contrast to some of my colleagues, I'm a little bit more open to creative use of those units. And I think I heard from you, Ms. McAdoo, that sort of a system around utilizing those credits may be bigger than we can do in this process. But I can envision a world where, with council approval, a sale of that credit could be used to make up part of our financial contribution in a world where we don't have a lot of cash to spare. So, I can envision some appropriately-constrained program where that could be very useful to getting to yes, so long as we retain some ability to say, "Yes, that works here, or it doesn't work here." So, I am, I, look, that's just a wild, harebrained idea, but I put it out there to say that I think that we might be doing ourselves a disservice to be so concrete in how we think about those banked units. There may be opportunities, and it's been done in other communities, where we sort of retain those elements that are most important to us about the banked units, which is getting the most affordable units as possible, while also sort of using it to our advantage in a transactional sense. So, I personally am open to that, and would be interested to hear what the parties may have to say about how those credits can be used to get us to a deal. With all that, I think it's very, very appropriate that we move it forward today, and I would be very happy to make the motion when the time is right.
Ms. Santorini.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I'll do my best to keep this brief. My colleagues have already mentioned a lot of things that I'm in favor of, but I'll reiterate a few, so you have it on record, some of the things that I'm particularly in favor of. I want to echo what Councilmember Sneddon said about the land transfer going directly to the Housing Authority and exploring what, if that would, you know, help with the feasibility, and really just making it a cleaner, smoother process. If it's going to go to AB and then Housing Authority, I mean, why not just send it directly? So, may not have all the answers right now, that's okay, but I think it would be very beneficial for our staff to look into that. You know, as far as local preference goes, as my colleagues have mentioned, big yes, you know, the concurrent building of affordable units, yes, all of that is great. I am in favor of continuing this conversation and moving this forward. However, I want to ensure that the robust public engagement is happening at the same time that these negotiations are happening. And what I mean by that is that I don't want to see this development agreement too far advanced to the point where public input is no longer able to be taken into consideration. Because we do, you know, this public engagement, yes, it is to explain what the city is doing, but it's also to receive feedback and incorporate that feedback. And I want us all to be on the same page and very clear about what this public engagement is. It's not just informative. We need to receive that input from folks, and which is why I'm very adamant about us being not just thorough with it, but doing it soon. Because I don't want to delay this project, but I don't want to expedite it at the expense of community input, and like Councilmember Sneddon said, I don't want to expedite it in the, at the expense of design. And so, I think if we are able to have both, I mean, if AB is also willing and interested to engage directly with the public, I think that would also be great. I don't know if they're willing, but at the very least, you know, our city staff and even our consultants, I think, would be very beneficial to meet with community now. And, you know, in us, you know, giving the direction to staff to continue these conversations and move forward, I do think that it's important we start having those conversations about every piece that we're negotiating. I know some of these issues are sensitive and maybe confidential, so some of that may just have to be brought to closed session. But as much as can be public during this process in creating that development agreement, it needs to be, because otherwise, at the end, when it's coming to council for final approval, that is not going to be a smooth process at all. And so, I would much rather iron out the issues that the community's coming forward with before that final development agreement is done. But, you know, with the, with the understanding that we're going to be engaging in a very robust community engagement process before a final agreement, I would be okay with moving this forward tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
All righty. Well, with any big project, the devil's in the details. Let's just make sure the demise isn't in the details as well. I remember all too well the 700 block, when it was shotgun shacks, and we had the old town mall, and how that finally was, became relatively decrepit, before we finally did the RDA and redeveloped the spot, became Bucaynoa. Unfortunately, what we did was we provided way too much big retail, and we kind of overbuilt that way, but that was, that was a lesson. It's what these malls go through. They go through these cycles, as we all well know. But I also remember the big hole in the ground, which was Los Encantos, and that was there for a long, long time, because we went back and forth on what was going to be. Is it going to be timeshares? Is it going to be apartments? Is it going to be condos? How much retail? So, what we have with AB, we have, you know, a $676 billion company. We don't have to worry about them running out of money. We did in other projects that we've done. So, it's important that we keep the ball moving, because even though they're a big company and they got lots of bucks, it doesn't mean they don't have to answer to their shareholders and their investors. So, we need to keep momentum going. We can't go sideways, and I think I'm hearing from my colleagues the same thing, which I think is really good. It's important that we get this going, because the, what they do at Bucaynoa was the riding, rising tide that's going to lift the surrounding boats on State Street. It's going to be a big deal. And the housing downtown, I mean, 80 units, I mean, any affordable housing is pretty amazing, but 80 affordable units is a friggin' miracle. I mean, that's, so, we can't look that in the eye. We've got to move forward, and we've got to see if we can get this executed. I don't love all the details. I do not love losing 186 parking spots in Lot 2 for one moment, if anybody knows me in parking. But it's really important. The one thing I might ask, Kelly, Ms. McAdoo, is that we talked about, talking to the county about the property tax. I was wondering, between current property tax and the increment raising up to the new level, if there couldn't be some kind of a sharing agreement, if that would, what incentive the county might have, kind of model against kind of the RDA, what we did with the incremental tax raising there.
I mean, given the county's budget situation, probably not likely, but I am happy to start the conversation and see where it goes.
But it'd be in the sharing anyway, because it is happening in our downtown, and it's going to benefit the county in both, and they'll get some of that, plus they're going to get a part of the sales tax, so it could be, it could be, if there is anything to do. And with that, I think there's way more to be, that's been said, that needs to be said. So, I would entertain a motion from my colleagues. Ms. Harmon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will move staff recommendations, one and two.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Friedman. Okay, does anybody, everybody understand the motion?
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Harmon, seconded by Mayor Protem Friedman, to approve staff recommendations A and B. Please go ahead and vote.
Oscar's not here.
Pardon me, let me cancel that, and we will redo this with Mr. Gutierrez. Hold, please. Now, what you're going to see here is just attendance, this is not the vote.
And while we're waiting, I want to mention that I really appreciate the number-one-word answers that Dan Henshaw gave us tonight. That was spectacular. I'll get that from an attorney.
Okay, now you can vote. Thank you. Would it go? Okay.
Pass you to Nancy. Thank you very much. Good discussion. And with that, council communications, committee assignment reports, Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank everyone, the Old Spanish Day Board, for having a fun fiestas. I know there is a lot of controversy around it this year, but I was out every day, and for the most part, I saw nothing but good times being had. And I do want to give my respects to Anthony Bescetta Hartley, who lost his life, unfortunately. And I want to thank the Police Department for their quick response to that situation. And I also want to give my condolences to the family of Helen Grace. She's a grandmother of a friend of mine. She lived up to be 102, and, yeah, she's, she will be missed. Thank you.
Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. At HLC, I heard multiple items, but one was on the outdoor furnishings for
At HLC, I heard multiple items, but one was on the outdoor furnishings for Library Plaza. And it's, it'll continue on the discussion on that. And I wanted to honor the Medina Garcia family and the loss of Isidro, and just acknowledge that that has, in our own departments, that also has an effect. And so just an honor to the Medina Garcia family.
All right, very good. And I attended the Fiesta Finale, which was dedicated to the memory of Aaron Graffey. And we did a, you guys helped give a presentation or proclamation to the family on that night. And I would like to adjourn in the memory of Peter McDougall, former president of City College, and quite an iconic figure in the city and among a lot of nonprofits in town. And with that, we are adjourned.